......................................................... Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for September 20th, 2011. And we'll begin with announcements. I would like to say that Town Administrator Mel Klechner and I went to the Legislature last Wednesday and testified before the Subcommittee on Municipal Affairs on two bills that are pending, having their home rule petitions, one having to do with taxi medallions and the other having to do with our Town Administrator by law, both of which were reported favorably out of committee. So, that's moving along and thanks to Representative Smysik for sponsoring and helping us with it. Any other announcements? Yes? Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I just wanted to announce that I think it's coming up very soon, the Connolly's Hardware in Washington Square is having an anniversary, is that?
Sunday.
Sunday. Are they having activities or?
There's gonna be a little sidewalk celebration.
I think it's their 60th year.
60th, yes.
Something like that. So, they've been in business for a long, long time, so people should stop by.
I believe they're the ones that sell Governor Dukakis his official U.S. Post Office mailbox colors. He goes out and paints the gray and blue mailboxes around town to cover up the graffiti and I'm pretty sure he gets his regulation paint.
Oh, well, I also get my paint from Connolly Hardware, not that I'm painting mailboxes, but.
I have some work there.
The, well, it's nice, it's actually wonderful to be able to acknowledge a business that's been operating continuously in Brookline for 60 years and I hope everybody will find time to drop by Connolly's and help celebrate. Other announcements? Anybody who has anything to add? Okay, then we'll move along to the miscellaneous calendar. First item is the minutes from September 13th. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
I did have some revisions and I gave them to Patty.
Okay.
I did the same.
Selectman Daley, and I did too. I think, anybody else have corrections?
We will get them.
All right.
Not to, am I crazy or I don't see the minutes on the agenda?
Well, it's under, it's under miscellaneous.
It's not on my agenda.
Whoops. Well, oh, there. It's not on your agenda.
Huge technicality.
Yeah, we'll put it on.
Oh, dear. All right, well, if it's not listed, then I guess we're not gonna vote them.
But if you do happen to have comments.
Okay, then I would invite members of the Board to provide their corrections and comments to the Secretary and we will put them on the calendar for our next meeting. Sorry, folks, about that. Okay, so, moving along to the other items on the miscellaneous calendar which were posted. First one is the question of appointing Michelle Early as Senior Clerk Typist in the Selectmen's Office. Any questions or comments? I was interested to notice that in the veto we got, it didn't mention what I assumed was her most recent employment, working for the Town Advisory Committee. Selectman Daley?
No, I just wanna note that she seems highly qualified for this job.
Yeah, and does, in fact, have experience working for the Advisory Committee. Any other comments?
I would just point out that this was the position that was vacated in during the budget process last year. We did reduce the hours of that position, but we're very happy to recommend Michelle for consideration.
Okay, then I move that we appoint Michelle Early Senior Clerk Typist in the Selectmen's Office. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Mermell?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And the next item is a request from the Town of Arlington that we support the candidacy of the Chair of Board there, Clarissa Rowe, whom we know, who's worked in Brookline with local landscaping projects, to be the at-large Town Representative in the Boston Region Metropolitan Planning Organization. So, are there any comments or questions from members of the Board? Anybody have any thoughts?
No, I just read through, you know, her statement and she seemed very qualified and certainly interested, so.
And is a partner actually with a Brookline resident, her landscape business is a Brook, we have a Brookline relationship, I guess, is what I'm saying. Okay, then I move that we support the candidacy of Clarissa Rowe, Chair of the Arlington Board of Selectmen, for one of the two at-large Town Seats at the Boston Regional Metropolitan Planning Organization. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Mermell?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Next item is a transfer with regard to the Emerald Necklace Bicycle Improvements and we have a memo here and I believe we have Mr. Levine to tell us about it.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is a project that DPW and Planning and Community Development have been working on for a little while. This really dates back to the last Transportation Bond bill at the federal level when there was an earmark put in for construction of improvements along the Emerald Necklace for bicycle and pedestrian crossings. Erin Chu Galantine and my office have been working together now to try to get that process moving and we issued a request for proposals for a consultant to look at certain crossings with a particular focus on the crossing at Route 9, which as many of you know is a difficult crossing for anybody, but is complicated by the fact that it's also a high-volume roadway that serves regional needs. So, to make a long story short, this is not new funding for this project. This is a $120,000 study originally. After going out to bid, we think we're going to increase the budget to $150,000 to make sure we can get the full design drawings that would allow us to access the earmark. What this transfer would allow us to do is take money that had been allocated for the roadway pedestrian path reconstruction that Parks and Open Space did a couple of years ago. They came in under budget, they had additional funds, they thought that it might make sense and we agreed to transfer those funds into this project which is related and that would allow us to save some or all of the money that came in as a DCR grant for actual construction of any improvements. So, it's a way of trying to use CDBG funds that we already have for related use and allow us to save grant money for what we're sure will be additional needs along the Emerald Necklace.
And because you have mentioned the messiness of that particular intersection, or I should say, set of intersections, would you mind just giving us a brief update on the status of the Gateway East Project, which would be another related project having to do with that set of intersections?
Absolutely, thank you. As many of you remember, there was an overall study done of that area called the Gateway East Public Realm Plan that was completed about five or six years ago. It identified different projects that we could sort of slice off and do independently and we've been working our way through that sort of work program over the last five or six years. The biggest piece is what you refer to as the Gateway East Project. It's really only one piece, but it's the largest piece and it involves reconstructing much of Route 9, moving the Walnut Street intersection where it currently stands to be across from Pearl Street, so there can be a four-way intersection there which would allow an at-grade crossing at that intersection to replace the decrepit overhead pedestrian bridge. There's a number of other public improvements that would allow us to widen the sidewalks and put in landscaping, but one of the most needed parts of it is it would allow us to replace the signals along that area and allow them to communicate with one another. Right now, they're all sort of what we call dumb signals that all sit there and have a timer that goes around and they change red to green, red to green. And to complicate the matter, whenever the fire station triggers the opticom, this cycle starts all over again. Wherever it was in the cycle, it'll start all over again and sometimes it can take 20 minutes or half an hour to fix that. With a new set of signals, we'll be able to make it so that the signals are coordinated more closely, can be adjusted remotely and, and this is one of the most important parts, when the opticom is tripped, it can start over again exactly where it left off in the cycle, which I think is, causes some serious problems when it happens. This piece will be coordinated with that project. If there is a recommendation for a light at this crossing, which I don't know whether there will be or not, it would obviously have to be closely coordinated with both Huntington Avenue and the other improvements, but there are a number of other options for this location that may not involve an actual sort of stoplight.
Questions, comments?
If I could just build on what Jeff has said, because these two projects are so closely related, there are two members, and I know this Board already knows this, but for the, for the public's interest, two members of the Planned Emerald Necklace Study Committee, the pedestrian, or the Bike Study Committee that this, this transfer is related to, previously served on the Gateway East Study Committee, so we'll have some good continuity there. We've also secured representation from the Department of Conservation and Recreation and we've already been in touch with the folks from the City of Boston about getting consulting information from them, given the tie-in with Huntington Ave and knowing that any decision we might make that would impact the flow of traffic in Brookline would obviously, a mere number of feet down the way, impact traffic in Boston. So, we're doing our very best to be incredibly cognizant of the multiple points of synergy at play here.
And I should point out that Selectman Mermell will be our representative to this committee, therefore, we know she will pay attention to all of these things.
The last thing I would add is that we are getting ready to file what are known as a 25% design plans to Mastod on the Village Square Drug Handle Improvements and we're gonna be bringing some plans before your Board in the next, excuse me, month to six weeks.
Oh, great. So, we'll be hearing from, we'll be seeing progress on that fairly soon.
There's been a lot of quiet progress over the last year, nothing that looks that different on the ground, but there's been a lot of court sampling, there's been a lot of engineering testing and we're finally ready to bring some plans to Mastod.
Good. Other questions, comments, members of the Board? Then, I will move that we approve a CDBC transfer in connection with the Emerald Necklace Greenway Bicycle Trail Improvements of $87,179.24. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Mermell?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess you're still with us for the electrical plug-ins for vehicles?
That's correct.
Vehicle plug-ins? Please explain.
Yes, the Town applied for a grant through the Department of Energy Resources, DOER, probably eight or nine months ago and it was to install electric vehicle charging stations in the Town. This is funded from a state settlement that they had with somebody related to some environmental cleanup. I actually don't remember which firm it was, but they decided to use it to fund a grant program for electric vehicle charging stations. The Town was awarded and funding to get two free stations and install them at two locations of our choosing in the Town. We had some decisions we had to make, but we had to make them fairly quickly 'cause the grant requires that the, that they be installed this fall. They really want them installed and up and running. So, we've had an internal group with Building and DPW and Planning looking at which of the various options of the technologies to choose and the selection decision was to choose a, a charging station that actually would allow you to charge two vehicles at once, the disadvantage being it would only allow you to use the newer charging technology. There are some stations that allow you to charge sort of the old generation of electric vehicles, but there actually are not very many of those around anymore. In fact, GM reclaimed a bunch of them off of lease, so we felt that bringing, the advantage of getting two stations was worth it to give up the old technology. We then tried to identify locations that would make sense in the Town and we had identified at a preliminary basis, one station at Town Hall, the Town Hall Parking Lot, and one station at Babcock Street, the Babcock Street Parking Lot. Brought those locations to the Transportation Board for feedback and they felt those made sense as appropriate locations. What we're seeking now is essentially a ability to accept the $1,000 plus the free stations and begin the installation process as per the vote of the Transportation Board.
Okay, questions, comments? Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I have one concern. I noticed in your memo to us, you said that the Town does not plan to charge for the electricity use at those stations.
We can't. Right, we're not allowed to charge for electricity?
Well, we actually could. We need to provide a basis for the amount we're charging.
Well, I, I would, I would suggest that we should charge something because, I mean, I know even in my household, when my kids got an extra computer, I would see a significant spike in my electric bill at my home from one extra computer. So, I imagine that these cars are using a kind of significant amount and I would, I'm suggesting that maybe you consider a very nominal charge, you know, it doesn't have to be the, the full amount.
Sure.
But I know from what we saw with our, our Green Dog Program and also newspapers, when they initially were having things online for free and now they're trying to charge for content, people start, feel that, you know, when you don't charge them anything, they feel they're entitled to this service and later it's, can be very difficult to institute a fee, whereas if you go with some kind of nominal fee, at some point saying, okay, we're raising that a little bit because the actual cost of the electricity is, is in excess of what you, you are being charged here, I think is a little easier than, than the situation where you're going from nothing to a significant fee.
Well, to explain our reasoning and I can certainly see where you're coming from, we are still gonna charge for parking at that parking space as, as anyone else would have to pay to park at those locations. We looked at how much we thought it would cost in terms of electricity. The estimates, it's hard to tell ahead of time, but it looks like to charge for two hours, which is the amount you can park there for, would be about a dollar's worth of electricity and the parking is, is $2, so I guess we could look at charging $3 for that location. What we were recommending was that since we can monitor the electricity usage at these lots to see how much is actually being used and use that to back into perhaps what we could charge, but we do have, the technology does allow you to charge for the electricity if you wish to.
Well, I'm not even saying you'd have to charge for the whole, 'cause you don't know yet exactly what it's gonna be, but if you charged something, a quarter extra over the meter fee or something, you would at least be establishing that people have to pay something for that electricity use.
I could just be remembering correctly, but I could've sworn, just from conversations with Laura at past Climate Action Committee meetings, that we couldn't charge for the electricity, but we could charge for parking and we could charge for parking at a different rate than for a normal spot.
Okay, that may be true. We could essentially do the same thing, then we could charge, say, $3 for two hours of parking.
You're certainly addressing what was gonna be my question, which is, who gets to plug in and how do we share?
Remember, we're going to, as a Town, we're having our capital program to acquire some electric vehicles.
Right.
In this current fiscal year, so if, assuming they're, they're being produced, we're, we'll use those.
I, I was really thinking how to allocate what will be limited options, that's all. I mean, you know, is somebody gonna have a sign-up list or whatever?
To use the stations?
Yeah, it just sounds to me as though there's a lot of detail that you haven't had an opportunity to really sort out, perhaps.
Well, I think we've worked out some of it. The timing has been difficult in that we really need to get them put in by the end of October.
Right.
But right now, the way it works is there is, it's similar to Zipcar where somebody can look up online what spaces are there and whether they're currently in use. Obviously, between the time you get offline and you drive over there, someone may have plugged in.
Oh, but you would be able actually to identify the location and, at that moment, that it would be available.
That's correct. And we can get data, similar to Hubway will allow us to provide, we can get data as to what the usage level is and after a certain amount of time, six months a year, we can revisit it. If no one's using the station, we can say, you know what, no one's using it, maybe we shouldn't leave this space for electric vehicles during the day, we should allow anyone to use it. We can, we can change a number of these policies. I have to look into your question about what, how we could potentially charge for electricity, but there would be some way to do so, I believe.
Well, if you could recover the cost by using the meters, maybe that's, gets you to the same place. Anyway, Selectman Goldstein?
A couple of things. First, I noticed that the equipment includes a credit card hookup that's part of the description, so.
Yeah, there's a...
I guess you can do that pretty easily.
You get a, you have, you can activate it with any card that has one of the little smart chips in it, but you also are issued one when you sign up to join this network as a car owner. Then you can potentially load money on the card and if we do charge for it, it gets deducted from there. We would, I maybe have to do that in lieu of charging parking on that spot, but you could certainly do that. Right now, the, if we didn't charge, everyone would get a, one of these cards with a chip, but it wouldn't have any money on it. They would just need it to unlock the, the charger.
I noticed in the, the Columbia Technologies Agreement, they make it clear in a couple places that there's a limited number of free charging stations and just 'cause we signed this agreement doesn't mean we're getting a free charging statement, a free charging station. Is that, is that true or do we know that we're getting one?
The State has told us that we're getting two free charging stations, so I'm not sure why it says that in the agreement.
Yeah.
But DOER has assured us there are two with our name on them until the end of October.
Is, is it considered a viable or at least a possible model for, if we were to go to an electric car economy, that municipalities would be in the business of, of providing electricity to, to automobiles?
Well, potentially, yes. There are some complications. We are allowed to recoup our costs, but we're not, theoretically, we're not supposed to make money off of it because we're not in the electric distribution business, which is why we wanted to get a baseline of how much it's really costing us to charge a vehicle because we felt that was more defensible with NSTAR. Having said that, there are other communities that charge much higher than the amount they really pay for electricity and no one seems to challenge them. If it happened on a large scale, I think it would be an issue.
I have one more question. Aside from installing these machines themselves in the location, what other, are there additional infrastructure improvements we're gonna have to make in order to have enough juice at these locations? Although I guess in the Town Law, we've already got some kind of an electrical station that I imagine you're replacing, but, I mean, are we equipped? Do we have a, a big enough line going to that location?
We've had them look at the conduits and there are conduits in both locations that they feel can handle the electricity needed for these stations. We are given a certain amount of money towards installation of the stations that we feel will basically cover the physical labor of pulling the wires through, but we don't have to upgrade, we don't have to put in new conduit. There's some minor work that needs to be done, but nothing significant.
Selectman Benka?
Yes, thank you. Would the electricity come out of the Building Department's budget?
I don't know the answer to that. Melissa, do you know?
They'd be coming from the DPW's budget, 'cause it's feeding off a street light meter.
Okay, do, and we are, we are paying for that electricity, obviously. Do we have any estimate of how much this is likely to be and is DPW on board?
We know what account to monitor, but obviously, we don't know what the usage will be yet, so, but they do, they are aware of it as well.
Okay.
Like I said, it's roughly $2 for a car to charge, so the question is how many cars a day they charge?
Selectman Daley?
Yeah, is there anything stopping me, if I have an electric vehicle, from coming when the, when I don't have to pay the meter fee, coming at night and plugging my car in and charging it all up?
Well, there's, there's no overnight parking in those spaces unless you have a permit as part of an overnight parking program, but other than that, there wouldn't be. What we are proposing is that there are certain peak times at both lots, in this case Tuesday and Thursday evenings, and at Babcock Street Friday and Saturdays, where those spaces would be available to everybody, not just electric vehicles. So, there's a good chance there wouldn't be a space for you in those situations.
Okay, sounds, sounds like this is one where we would like you, once it is up and running, to report back to us what the experience is, both with regard to demand for the spaces and the electrical costs and the questions that have been raised about charging appropriately for the, both parking space and for the electricity consumed.
We'd be happy to.
We'll, we'll look for a report from you when, when you've got the information. Okay, any other questions or comments? Then I move that we award and execute a grant agreement with the Department of Energy Resources for the installation of electric vehicle charging stations, one to be in the Town Hall Parking Lot, one to be in the Babcock Street Parking Lot. And secondly, I move that we authorize Director of Planning and Community Development Jeff Levine to execute the Charge Point America Station Award Agreement. And I'm gonna take these in one vote for both questions. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Mermell?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Levine.
Thanks again.
Finally, I move that we grant a permit to serve alcoholic beverages not for sale to the Lars Anderson Auto Museum and Collection with a birthday party on September 30th. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Mermell?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And now, we will turn to the main calendar where we have Mr. Nemser. Would you like to come forward, please, on your semi-annual visit?
Things I look forward to doing on my way.
Welcome from...
Would you be here once again?
From the Boston Athletic Association.
On behalf of the Boston Athletic Association, I'm happy to be here to talk about our annual BAA Half Marathon. Once again, we thank Brookline for supporting us in this great fall event. It was nice to be preceded by a conversation which talked about other uses of the Emerald Necklace, the bicyclists. Runners share the Emerald Necklace with the bicyclists. We get full use of the road on October 9th, thanks to the DCR and the Town of Brookline. We're well underway in preparation for the annual running of the BAA Half Marathon. We're back in our new home. You might recall that last year, we moved from our Fenway location up to Franklin Park, making it a south-to-north run as opposed to a north-south run. We had a great experience there in Franklin Park, it was very nice. We had the opportunity to see the same beauty of the Emerald Necklace, but coming at it in a different direction. So, we're happy to return there. By and large, we have no changes to the event this year. We did increase our field size, we have a larger venue to be able to accommodate some additional runners and the roadways can accommodate that size as well. So, from the traditional 6,000, we've been permitted for 7,000 by the DCR to run on the roadways. The impact to Brookline is pretty much the same. We have the race starting at 8:30, entering the Town of Brookline at about the four-mile mark, the first runners will come in at about 10 minutes to 9:00, we'll have the exit from Brookline at about the six-mile mark, the last runner leaving at around 9:30. Total road closures in the two-hour timeframe from about 8 o'clock to around 10 o'clock. We have a community awareness program in place, letting people know, some advertisements will be placed in, the local paper, variable message boards going out. We've been coordinating with the Department of Public Works and the Police Department relative to the road closure devices and the personnel used to be able to help manage the road. Captain Grothman has been very supportive as, has been Chief O'Leary, as well as everybody over at DPW. Our beneficiary again this year is the Emerald Necklace Foundation Conservancy and they are taking a more active role. They're actually coming out with some people to be able to help this year. So, once again, we're looking forward to a great event on the Columbus Day weekend and as always, we appreciate the support that's given to us by Brookline.
Well, I can also add that both Chief O'Leary and Commissioner Peppa Sturgeon have assured me of full support from Town Staff and Public Safety folks and everybody's looking forward to a day without rain, we hope.
We're gonna hope for sunshine.
Of bright sunshine. And I would just like to be able to say publicly that I was invited to be at the finish for the first woman finisher. I'm unable to attend, but Selectman Mermell, our runner, and she's actually got our, our Brookline Selectmen's Marathon Trophy there, has agreed to come and will represent...
I left a message for Pam.
Pam, I was gonna say, if you're gonna touch with Pam, she'll be in touch with all the details.
I haven't heard back from her, but I left her a message the other day, I'm sure we'll connect.
She'll have more information than you need and you know.
Great.
So, we're, we're very happy that Selectman Mermell can do that and for the record, she has run the half marathon previously. She's not running it this year, but she'll be at the finish. So, that's, that's very nice. Any other questions, comments from members of the Board?
Just looking forward to being there and feeling guilty that I'm standing there holding a ribbon and not running myself.
Everybody's gotta roll that day.
And I don't believe any action is required on the part of the Board, other than to wish you well and great success and good weather.
Thank you very much. I'd also like to say thank you very much for the support you gave us for the BAA Jimmy Fund Marathon Walk that took place on Sunday. There were some challenges on Beacon Street, down by St. Balken Street with some of the ongoing construction. Again, Captain Grothman just showed great...
We blamed that one on the MWRA.
I blame that on the MWRA and it took Brookline to be able to handle that, but there was just great support all the way from DPW and the Brookline Police in being able to manage that, mostly as the patients leave the Jimmy Fund, the Dana Barbara Cancer Center.
Sure.
-down over the Longwood area. So we thank you for that as well.
You're very welcome.
Thanks, Gavok.
Okay. Now we have a couple of board and commission candidates. For the Women's Commission, is Jamie Tober here? Just come up to the microphone, please. Tell us why you're interested in joining the Women's Commission.
I'm interested in joining the Women's Commission, pretty much because a couple months ago, I graduated from Simmons College with my masters, and I went back after I kind of hit a crossroads after graduating. And I met with a mentor, and my mentor kind of looked at me and just said to me, "You really have to find your passion in life, and then you have to figure out how to work your future around it." And in the last year, I've gotten very involved in the Brookline community. I've been working at a local place in Brookline, and I've really become active in a lot of giving back to a lot of the local charities and philanthropies in the area. After I met with a woman who is on the Women's Commission, she had suggested this to me, and I just kind of saw the paths align and thought it was something that I would like to pursue into the future.
Great. Questions from members of the board? Selectman Daly?
Yeah, I just wondered if you had any specific projects or things that you would like to spearhead, perhaps?
Specifically, things that I am very interested in are discrimination in the workplace, which is something that I've always kind of had a passion towards. No severe background in it, just something that, as a female, I kind of... We did a lot of that in my grad program. It was in the business school, and considering it's an all-women's school, you kind of, we did a lot of work, a lot of research, a lot of projects on that specifically, and it's just something I've always felt strongly about.
Okay. Thank you for your interest. We make our appointments sort of in a batch, and we haven't scheduled a time for that yet. Don't be discouraged if you don't hear from us for a couple of weeks, but you will hear in writing when the vote's taken.
Great.
So thank you for your interest. Appreciate it. Kristin Eucherman? Did I get that right? Sorry?
Eucherman.
Eucherman. Okay. Well, I thought there should be an umlaut, but I wasn't sure.
There was.
Once upon a time. Right. Yeah, right. Okay. Again, tell us why you're interested in the Women's Commission.
I am interested in the Commission because I am deeply passionate about education of women, particularly when it comes to economic and entrepreneurial aspects of women's lives. I think a lot of the times, we focus on trying to help women who are already women, and we need to start some of that training a little bit earlier, and try to reach women when they're younger. Talk to them about starting a business, talk to them about creating a healthy financial life for themselves. And so these are things that I'm really passionate about, and I think that we could do on the Women's Commission.
Sounds like also from looking at your experience, your background, you're an organizer.
Indeed.
Organized, if not an organizer. Questions, comments, members of the board? Yes, Selectman Mermell?
Kristin, I know you have a lot of experience with nonprofits, including some nonprofits in town that sort of aren't gender-related. I'm wondering if you might have any thoughts about sort of cross-pollinating. You know, the Commission does a lot of great work with Dress for Success and other nonprofits that are definitely women-oriented. Do you think that there might be any opportunities, or have you given any thought to ways that sort of gender-neutral nonprofits around town might engage with the Commission?
I think that that's a really, I think that's a really interesting idea. One of the organizations that I'm involved with here in Brookline is called Bonafour Brookline, and they really focus on a lot of gardening and healthy living. And I think sometimes people think of gardening as a woman's hobby, but I can tell you that there are a lot of men involved in Bonafour Brookline and on our steering committee, and out working in our gardens. And so I think that when it comes to, you know, two issues like either healthy eating or economic development, these are both men's and women's issues, and we should be bringing both peoples into the group.
All genders.
All genders. Well said.
Okay. Selectman Daly?
Yeah, no, I'm interested in your idea of stimulating girls about getting, you know, developing their own businesses and things. So is your idea maybe a program that would take place in the schools, or how would you envision that happening?
That's a great question. I would have to work with the Commission and see kind of where they think that program would be, some kind of programming would be best implemented here. I think in the schools is a great idea, particularly middle school and high school, when young girls are kind of looking out there in the world and saying, "What am I going to do? Who am I going to be?" To present these opportunities as really viable opportunities, and to start thinking about, "Here are some of the things that I need to be doing. Here are some things that I want to be studying. Here's maybe places where I might want to volunteer." I think that kind of program can be really powerful.
Wow. It's great to hear your enthusiasm. Sorry about putting you on a delay or hold. We'll let you know after we take our vote, and it may be a couple of weeks before we're able to do that.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your interest. Okay. Now, I believe we have an applicant for the Arts Commission, Mr. Steck. Steck? Yes. Welcome.
Thank you for inviting me.
Tell us what your interests are and why you would like to be part of the Commission for the Arts.
Well, I'm currently an art educator. I teach art history and critical studies at the Art Institute of Boston, which is part of Leslie University. Been involved in the arts for 20-plus years, both in visual arts, which part of that, and music. I'm a longtime resident of Brookline, so I'm deeply committed to the community, and deeply committed to the idea of bringing the arts into communities. I'm currently a founding member of the Visual Culture Consortium, which is a Boston-wide visual arts organization consortium that brings together students, faculty, professionals in the field of art history and visual culture. I think there's immediate ways that that organization, for example, can be used to create programs, partnerships within Brookline.
Questions, comments, members of the board? Selectman Daly?
Yeah, can we just have some specifics on that, what kind of programs you're thinking of?
Yeah, yeah. I was looking at the Commission's website, and I think the Commission does really terrific work. But I think one area that could be developed is the benefit of being in an urban area like Boston is there's so many resources, institutional resources, for example, universities, museums, corporations, all of which are eager to reach out to local suburban communities, neighborhoods within Boston. I think there can be some links there. For example, establishing a Brookline Day at the Institute of Contemporary Art, a Brookline Day at the Children's Museum. So creating opportunities with those types of institutions that are specific to the Brookline community. New England Conservatory has a wonderful program in educating music educators. Leslie University has a great art education program. Why not use those resources, bring those people to the Brookline schools? All that can be brokered through the Commission. The great thing about that is it takes no financial capital. It only takes what equity. Very, very easy to do, and those institutions are eager to do it.
Okay, thank you. Sounds great. Other questions and comments? I just want to say that I noticed in your letter, you mentioned a Young Composers Festival, and Brookline has a local music school and great interest in young musicians. So that's one that certainly had piqued my interest. Selectman Goldstein?
Quick question. So is there a particular artistic medium that you are most experienced in, and kind of a pointed question? Chairman DeWitt may reference that music is perhaps something that you have some experience in. What about literary arts, though?
Literary? Well, my dissertation was on an artist named Ellsworth Kelly, but much of my dissertation actually dealt with writers like Gertrude Stein and their relationship to modernist artists. So in a kind of roundabout scholarly way, I have an interest in literature. And I'm always, my field is contemporary art, and it's very much part of the contemporary landscape within the arts right now, visual arts, to think in terms of interdisciplinary practice. So I think certainly at A.I.A., where I teach, for example, we're always trying to create links between different fields of practice, different media, different disciplines, so links between writers and visual artists, or musicians and visual artists. The program, for example, the Young Composers Festival was in large part pioneered by an organization called the New Gallery Concert Series, which pairs young composers and musicians with young visual artists around specific kinds of themes. So, you know, my background isn't specifically in literature, but I'm always looking for ways to link, for example, literature to visual arts. Thank you.
And I will just comment that the Commission and its members are extremely diverse, so you will, would certainly find among the members ones who are literary folk, who are print or two-dimensional artists, so it's a great group. Thank you very much for your interest. I'll tell you what I've told everybody else. Don't hold your breath. We'll send you a letter. But we very much appreciate that you're willing to volunteer to be on the Commission.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now we are taking up warrant articles for the Fall Town Meeting. The first item is Article Number Four. Ms. Allen, would you like to come forward and tell us about it?
Thank you.
And I see that we have Mr. Cirillo in the room, just in case we have questions from the municipal side.
Okay. I guess you all have a copy of it?
Yep.
Do you also receive a copy of Page Two, the Suggested Federal Exemption Certificate?
No.
I don't think so, no.
Okay. I'm going to hand out just a couple, just so you have them. I don't think I have five, but maybe-
Well, if you give us at least one for the record, we'll make copies.
I have two I can give you right now, or even three. Here's three. Share them. This should have been part of the, I thought it included the explanation, but I, maybe you-
Yeah. We could share.
We could share.
I've been researching this issue since 2007. I'm a longtime member of the anti-war group, Brookline Peaceworks. My concern was that our tax dollars was being used to fund the harm of innocent people overseas. I received at one point in 2007 emails saying that we were being unlawfully charged federal income taxes, which I found completely unbelievable. But I researched the issue and found that it had quite a bit of validity. Under our current tax law, the only person who has legal liability for the paying of federal withholding income tax is the federal withholding agent. Under Title 26, Section 7701A16, Section 1441, which states that the person, a federal withholding agent is defined as the person required to deduct and withhold any tax under the provisions of Section 1441, withholding of tax on non-resident aliens, 1442, withholding of tax on foreign corporations, 1443, withholding of tax-exempt organizations subject to certain sections. And the most important one is Section 1461, which denotes the person liable for withheld tax. Now, if you look at Page Two, you will see some interesting quotes. The first one, take a look at the middle of the page, "Payment of federal income tax is voluntary." If you take a look at the third one down, U.S. Supreme Court, quote, "Our system of taxation is based on voluntary assessment and payment." And the reason why that is, is because under Amendment Five, no one can be required to testify against themselves. Then you have two IRS commissioners who both attest to the fact that we have a voluntary compliance system, and even Senator Harry Reid says online that we have a voluntary tax system. Now, if you look just above that, you will see that consistent with the definition of a withholding agent is the fact that U.S. citizens who are living and working abroad, for example, in Guam, or France, or Mexico, are liable for income tax on their wages. That would be Title 26, Section 911, one. Compensation abroad includes compensation for services rendered, and that would cost the person about 30%. Now, the form for a person working and living abroad would be Form 255. However, the correct form for a non-resident alien individual is Form 1040, which is linked with Title 26, Section 871, Tax on Non-Resident Alien Individuals. And if you look right below that, you will see 1040, U.S. Individual Income Tax Return. If you look to the left, under Form 2555, you will clearly see it says, "For use by U.S. citizens and residents, aliens only." So the point is, if people want to volunteer to pay federal withholding income tax, then they should be allowed a choice. But under the law, there is no requirement. So to require town employees to fill out a federal withholding exemption form and choose between 1 to 5 or 1 to 10 withholding exemptions before they can begin their employment with the town would not be consistent with what the withholding agent is allowed or authorized by law to do. Now, I spoke with our Director of Payroll, and we kind of went, her name, Verge Fitzgerald, and I went over this a little bit with her because I was looking for feedback. And the reason I spoke to her is because my greatest concern is liability for the town. Of course, you know, lack of knowledge of the law is no excuse. If the town is requiring citizen residents to have their wages withheld, and it isn't required, but there is a misrepresentation made that they must have their wages withheld, then it really is the town that could be liable for millions of dollars, maybe even with interest, to compensate these employees who acted in good faith and believed that they were following the law, as did the payroll director. She asked me a very relevant question, which is, "Well, if this is the law, then why are we withdrawing funds from citizen residents?" And I said, "Well, that's a good question." So I spoke to several officials at the state level, who all asked me to contact a federal official, who I tried contacting numerous times and actually spoke with this evening. I spoke to Barney Frank about two hours ago, and I had already emailed him this numerous times, but thus far had not received a response. And so I spoke to one of his staffers and said, "I was going to be presenting this this evening, and would he like to comment?" And he said that he could not give me a law. He asked me, "What was my question?" I said, "Could you give me the law that authorizes the federal withholding agent to withhold from citizen residents living and working in the United States?" And he couldn't, and he regrettably did not, he hung up on me. And so I called again, and I asked someone else if he could just, you know, maybe see if he could find it and possibly get back to me. And they hung up on me. And I called a third time and got the same result, and that was as much as I really was willing to take it. I have submitted the federal withholding tax exemption certificate. It looks practically identical to what you're looking at right now, and I gave it in 2010. He received three copies of this through email, and I took a hard copy to the Newton Public Library and gave him a copy. And when he saw it, regrettably, he ripped it up, and I was so surprised. But that did happen. And I wonder if, my guess is, it's likely there is no law, because someone who graduated from Harvard Law School certainly would be able to give me the law if it existed. So that being said, I'd like to point out a couple of reasons why I'm working on this pretty hard, and that is, I'm a strong supporter of social services for children and all members of the community. And I got into politics years ago, 15 years ago possibly, because I saw that my husband and I are paying more and more taxes, but our services are being reduced, especially the services for children and the elderly. And I think, and that was a big concern for me, and happy to pay taxes as long as- And happy to pay taxes as long as they are being used to provide services where they are needed most. Now, what I found with regard to our taxation system is, are, the IRS is really not working for the United States government. They are working for, and this is so unbelievable, but I have really researched this, and I can back it up with hard data. Under Title Thirty-One, there is a special fund out of offshore in Puerto Rico. It's called Special Fund Sixty-Two Internal Revenue. And that happens to be the Internal Revenue Service that is collecting from United States citizens living and working in the fifty states across the country. Now, this, this, these funds that are collected by this offshore collection agency are being transferred to the Federal Reserve, which then transfers the majority of these funds to the International Monetary Fund, the IMF. And at that point, that money is being used and converted into, it's called SDRs, which are Special Drawing Rights. And these Special Drawing Rights are being used to pretty much buy and exchange stocks on the open market and pay the International Monetary, IMF's, you know, bills. And, and I have hard data.
All right, Ms. Allen, I'm gonna ask you to conclude.
Of course.
I hate to say this, but I think you've moved far, far afield from any power of a municipality to.
I understand, thank you.
Influence any of these federal matters.
I just wanted you to note the motivation. My concern, again, is liability. If the town is requiring employees to fill out a W-four, or a W-two before they can work and fill out exemptions, that isn't lawful, because they don't have to pay under current laws. And that is, I wouldn't want even more services to be lost from our children and our elderly and the community that needs them for a mistake that is, is just very regrettable. And that could be very costly. That is my concern, and I can, writing up a lot of information.
Okay, let's see if there are any questions or comments from members of the board.
Of course.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer.
Just wait a moment.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, I'm, I'm a little confused. I mean, you spoke about citizen residents. Our obligation to withhold is from our employees, whether they're residents of Brookline or not. If they're employed by the town of Brookline, we have an obligation under federal law to withhold taxes from the amount they're paid. And I believe we are complying with our obligation under federal law. So, I'm confused about what.
Citizen, citizen residents means anyone living and working in one of the fifty states. Doesn't mean a citizen of, of Brookline.
I think, and you're.
Selectman Daley.
Excuse me.
Of course.
If I understand, Selectman Daley is saying, "Our responsibility is limited to that number of people who are municipal employees." Those are the folks.
Of course.
Whom we are the agent for collecting. But all we can talk about is those folks who happen to be municipal employees.
That's what I'm talking, that's what I'm referring to.
Selectman Goldstein?
So, tax withholdings are done by, as far as I know, every employer in the entire United States, not just the town of Brookline, right? Do you know of any employers who are not doing withholding? And just because Select, Representative Smizer can't quote you the exact statute.
Barney Frank.
To Harvard Law School, you assume that, that by reason of that, the entire, that the entire withholding scheme is, that's done by ninety-nine point nine-nine-nine percent of all employers in, in the United States? You, you assume that that's illegal and unconstitutional?
New York, I have an article here, the New York Times, saying, "Income Tax Is Illegal." Business owners quit paying.
Please, please, don't quote me a, a secondary source. And, you know, answer the question.
I will answer the question. The, the.
But you do this all the time. I mean, all your, all your background and all your support for your arguments is quoting out of context, you know, little quips from, from IRS commissioners, saying, "We have a voluntary compliance system." Yeah, that means that, that your first crack at paying your taxes is, is to voluntarily submit it. It doesn't mean it's optional. So, don't quote me from the New York Times. Answer the question. I mean, do you know of any employers anywhere that aren't collecting withholding, who are, who aren't in violation of law?
Any employer who withholds without a law authorizing the withholding agent to withhold from citizen residents is in violation of the law.
So, we're all in violation of the law.
Yes.
The whole country is in violation of the law.
Yes. I know how unbelievable this seems, but it.
It does seem unbelievable.
I agree with you, it does.
But, you know, the fact that every single employer in the country is doing it, gives me some comfort that the town of Brookline should be doing it too.
Selectman Banker?
Okay. I, I think Town Council read your article differently. I read it differently. Let me just make sure that we understand, or at least I understand, what you're trying to say. The article as written said that the town of Brookline shall, in compliance with Title Twenty-Six, et cetera, deduct and withhold tax from town employees under the provisions of Section Fourteen-Forty-One, Fourteen-Forty-Two, and Forty-Three, dealing with withholding of tax on non-resident aliens, withholding of tax on foreign corporations, and withholding of tax on foreign tax-exempt organizations.
That's right.
Okay.
And One-Four-Six-One, liability for withheld tax.
Liability for withheld tax, which doesn't, as I read this, name anybody specifically. I thought that what you were saying was that the, that the town of Brookline was not withholding federal taxes on these groups of individuals, non-resident aliens, foreign corporations, and foreign tax-exempt organizations, and that we should be doing that. And I think Town Council read your article the same way. What I hear from you today is that you're saying that the town of Brookline should not be withholding taxes from citizens who are residents of these United States.
That's correct. Unless there is, unless you can find the law that authorizes it.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying.
I just wanna, I just wanna understand your argument. Your argument is not that we're failing to withhold from groups of people, but that we have no authority to withhold it from citizens who are residents.
That's correct.
Okay, good. We can just.
Chairman Dewitt, I wonder if we could hear from Mr. Cirillo.
I was about to ask him.
I was, I was gonna ask how that's relevant to the issue, or the assertion that, quote, "The IRS is a privately owned Puerto Rican trust fund," unquote.
Right. I, I know when I.
Why should we, why should we be donating to the IMF? I mean, that's theft of public funds. That's my concern.
My, my tax bill, I'm sending it to the U.S. Treasury.
Wait a minute, folks, all right. Mr. Cirillo, would you please come forward? Do you want me to sit down?
Sure. You can.
Okay. I think we frame the issue, Mr. Cirillo, that we do not have authority to withhold taxes from citizen residents.
First of all, I appreciate you asking my opinion on this. On behalf of Jennifer Gilbert and myself, I'd like to respond. We jointly reviewed this, and we have recommended to the Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee and to the Town Meeting no action, for two reasons. First of all, although the petitioner has a very interesting interpretation of the law, as you've all stated, the vast majority of, of organizations and employers across the United States differ in that opinion. They, they believe that, in fact, it is legal to withdraw and require to withdraw the federal income tax. And so, Jennifer and I believe, in fact, that this particular question should be answered in the courts and not in the local government. Second reason for no action is, in fact, that federal law cannot be changed by local bylaw. And so, with that said, we recommend no action on this.
Okay.
Uh, wait, wait, wait. We have, wait, Mr. Cirillo, no, I, we're gonna let some.
Just one second.
Ms. Allen, we're going to have Selectman respond to Mr. Cirillo. If you wait a moment.
Sure.
Just wait, all right? Selectman Banker?
Yeah. Um, I, I think, I, I understand your response, Mr. Cirillo, but I think that the issue here is, is there authority that, is there a statute or some other provision that gives the town of Brookline authority to withhold taxes as to citizen residents? And it's not quoted in Jennifer's memo, because I don't think Jennifer understood, nor did I understand, what argument this warrant article was making. And I think as we go forward, I'm not, you're not a lawyer, and I'm not putting that question to you. I think that, you know, we just identify that as we go forward in this process.
Yeah, we agree. And again, we believe that that, in the end, would be resolved in the courts.
I'm, I suspect that that is the case.
Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I think it's more than that, though, is in terms of us having authority to withhold taxes. I believe employers are mandated under federal law to withhold taxes.
Right.
It's not a question of, you know, having an option to do it or not. I, it's, and I, I can't quote the section, I don't know.
That is what the vast majority of people in corporations and employers believe.
And it's your opinion that we are, as the town of Brookline, mandated.
Yes.
By federal law to withhold taxes.
Yes.
From our employees, and that is what we are currently doing.
Yeah, we, we, we give our employees an option in their pre-employment package for exemptions and to be exempt from federal tax for various reasons. That there's a form that they can fill out in submission of their paperwork to begin employment. We also give them the option of deductions that they could take in, in that manner. But I believe, and it's my interpretation, and as I say, it's the vast majority of people in the country believe, that it's a requirement of all employers to withhold, as an agent, withhold federal taxes and distribute it to the federal treasury on a timely basis. We do it weekly.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Cirillo?
I think, I think the issue is on the table, and we'll deal with it.
Ms. Allen, Ms. Allen, you're welcome to come forward and very briefly respond.
This board is required to uphold legal statutes. It is not a matter for the court. Every citizen has the same responsibility. Every member of this board took an oath to uphold our Constitution. So, you are required to uphold and defend our laws. If there is a law authorizing the federal withholding agent to withdraw from citizen residents living and working in the United States, I agree that that process should go forward. However, if there is no law, then this board must uphold the current law. And I've, I have found five different definitions for the federal withholding agent. They all say the same thing. It's to withhold for foreign earnings. Thank you.
Okay, and Ms. Allen, may I suggest that since the, the material that we received.
Right.
Was very brief.
Right.
That if you have.
I have a whole thing here.
Additional explanations, you might want to make sure that some information gets printed into the warrant.
I will do that, and I will, this is such a, I've been writing this whole big packet. I can copy people on it, it's just so much, I didn't want to print it out. But I thought I would copy people on it after I made this presentation.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much for considering this issue.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, I'm gonna skip a couple of items. We're gonna skip the warrant articles for a moment and take up a couple of food vendor licenses, which I hope will go very quickly, and then we'll have time to discuss the other two warrant articles. So, let's take up the question of, "Am Gad Menias Doing Business as Phillips Market, Requesting a Change of Location?" I believe this is something brought about by Development in the.
Brookline Place.
In Brookline Place, yeah.
Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, Attorney Thomas Truax, Five-Thirty Loring Avenue, Salem, Mass., on behalf of Mr. Menias, who was standing next to me. As you've pointed out, the application before you is an approval for a food vendor license, change of location. The present location is in Brookline Place, but as we have been told by Mr. Menias's landlord, he has until May, and then they are gonna be tearing down the structure for a hospital space to be constructed in that same location. So, Mr. Menias is an owner of a condominium at Thirty-Four Station. It's an office, it's a commercial condominium. And he's looking to change his location to that particular address, which is, I think it's not very far, it's maybe a stone's throw away from the Brookline Place address that he is at now. Mr. Menias is a seasoned veteran of a convenience stores. He'll be bringing over fifteen years of experience to this particular location. His experience includes eleven years as the owner of the location at Village Market in Brookline Place. And he's also is a current owner of a smaller operation, a smaller convenience store at Financial Place at South Station and at Eighteen Tremont Street in downtown Boston. Needless to say, as I said, he'll be bringing many years of experience to the, to the new location, and we would respectfully request that the board grant his request.
Okay, a couple of comments. The Building Department said, as of the application date, that they did not have a application for a building permit, which would be necessary for renovating the premises, which I assume will be going forward. I saw the commissioner a minute ago, although I think he's gone now. Do you have a plan to apply for a building? Do you understand you must apply for a building permit, I guess?
I would apply for a building permit.
Okay, you know that you must do that. All right. And also, that any signage that you intend to put up for your business would have to be approved by the Planning Board?
Yeah.
And you know that?
Yeah.
Okay. And I believe you have already arranged for having your waste picked up, is that correct? Okay. Any questions for other members of the board? Selectman Goldstein?
Thank you. I noticed in your application, under "Type of Food Generally Sold," you say "Packaged Store," so.
It's a convenience store with no cooking, like packaged.
Prepackaged.
It's a misnomer. I think you're, think of a beer and wine, it's not packaged store in that sense.
I want to make sure you don't understand that.
It's a packaged goods store.
Okay, well, I think our minutes should reflect very specifically that despite the fact that you say "packaged store" in your application, this is by no means an, an application for any alcoholic beverage.
No, no. Thank you.
Okay, Selectman Daley, you.
But my, my question was the same.
All right. Any other questions for members of the board? Hearing none, then I move that we approve. Oh, sorry. There are people here who would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this application? Then you may come forward, one at a time. You may all come forward and then take turns. Just identify yourself by name and address, please.
My name is Eric Ostrue. I live at Thirty-Four Station Street, the building that this permit is requested for. And I have a letter that is signed by every member of the condo association, every member of Station Street. And with your permission, I'd like to read the letter and provide you the copies.
Okay, please.
And let me just start by saying that all the residents of Thirty-Four Station Street know Phil and have run into him, and I hope that he doesn't take our opposition personally.
No.
Thank you. Um, this letter is to petition you to reject the application of Mr. Menias for a food vendor license permit to turn the ground floor of Thirty-Four Station Street in Brookline Village into a convenience store. The proposed convenience store would move into a location that is actually inside the only entrance to our homes at Thirty-Four Station Street, and would not have a separate customer entrance, nor a separate entrance for deliveries. We object to this business moving into this location for the following reasons. First, security issues. Because the proposed store will not have its own entrance, customers will have to enter via the common lobby that allows us access to our homes. This means that at any given time, it will be difficult to buzz someone into the building without also giving access to convenience store customers. This situation cannot help but result in a higher risk of robbery within the building, within the building. It will likewise be impossible to securely, yeah, I'm sorry, finally, since packages and mail are delivered to this common lobby, it will become trivial for customers of the proposed convenience store to simply pick these items up on their way out of the building. In our view, any business that reject, that results in these sorts of risks to the safety and security of us and our families ought to be rejected outright. And also, it should be noted that the issue cannot be resolved by creating a separate entrance to the building, because Thirty-One Thirty-Four Station Street is a designated historical building whose external face cannot be modified. Our second reason. Our second reason is secondhand smoke. The entrance to the proposed convenience store is located directly underneath the windows of the bedrooms that we and our families, including several children under the age of three, sleep in. Since this business already does exist directly across the T-tracks from us, we have been able to observe that after purchasing cigarettes, many patrons loiter around the entrance to the store while smoking. The fact that our building has several conveniently placed deep steps right next to this entrance that can serve as a bench only makes it more certain that this behavior would continue or get worse. The result would be a fairly constant stream of secondhand smoke dripping, drifting up to our bedrooms with all the health, health risks that that does entail. We know a certainty that smoking around the building can make its way into the bedrooms because at least one parent has already had the experience of smelling smoke in a child's bedroom and resolving the issue by asking smokers on the street to relocate. Our third reason is rats and other pests. The residents of our building have all had to be extremely vigilant to keep a mouse problem from becoming significant within the building. The challenge of keeping vermin under control would be impossible if the first floor of the building was stocked with items that mice, rats, roaches, and other pests could easily open and eat. The health issues surrounding explosion of pests in a residential building are of great concern to us. And once again, because we currently live across the T-tracks from the current location of this business, we have been able to observe firsthand on many occasions that large rats thrive immediately around the building where the convenience store is located today. Our fourth reason is foot traffic and noise at a level that make day-to-day life problematic. In the normal course of operating a convenience store, this business will create noise and inconvenience for every one of its neighbors. Our building does not have a loading dock, and since we cannot by law modify the external face of the building to have one, every one of the frequent early morning deliveries that currently supply the convenience store will be made to the front of the building, once again, directly under our bedroom windows. We have observed that these deliveries are made by large panel trucks with loud diesel motors that are left running, and that dollies and ramps used to move the large pallets of supplies into the store are frequently dropped and banged around in a manner that even its current location across the T-tracks is very loud. In addition, there are many times when customers who have completed their purchase, purchases loiter outside the convenience store for extended periods of time, having sometimes very loud conversations. These factors, combined with constant foot traffic, will make life inconvenient for the adults living in the building and have the potential to make healthy sleep patterns for the resident toddlers impossible by interrupting naps and bedtimes and waking them up early in the morning. And the fifth and final reason is the substantial property price impact. There are 12 units in the 3134 Station Street building, each currently valued at around half a million dollars. We would expect our homes to decrease in value if a business with the negative impacts described above moved into our building. A conservative 15% decrease in the assessed value of our homes because of this convenience store would erase nearly $1 million from our collective wallets. Not only is this a taking of money from us as individuals, but the resulting lower valuations would most likely result in us paying less taxes as a group, potentially completely offsetting any tax revenue the town would gather from the convenience store itself. We are not opposed to the fact that this is commercial space. It has always been commercial space, and we are comfortable with that. But for all the reasons lifted above, listed above, a convenience store or other high-traffic retail space will make the homes where we live and raise our families unsafe, unhealthy, and less valuable. For these reasons, we ask you, our elected representatives, to protect our interests by denying this application. And I would also mention Francis Winter is a resident of this building as well. She used to be a town meeting member. She, she mentioned that when she was a town meeting member before I moved to Brookline four or five years back, the residents of this building, for the most part, ended up putting aside their objections to the construction that is unfortunately forcing Mr. Minius to relocate of the large building directly across the T-tracks from us because it was best for the, the town and the retail space was needed. And she said that this might be an instance where it was too much for us to sacrifice for the individual business, and there wasn't any benefit to the town.
Okay. Slakman Banka?
Couple of questions. What was in the space? Was there a commercial use, and what was the commercial use going back over time?
The, the space was a office of the Art Institute, I believe, where one of your previous volunteers works. The Art Institute is in the building directly across from the T-tracks as well. It was the career placement office of the Art Institute, and so it was office space, essentially. There were occasional visitors, but they were all, they're all known and expected. It wasn't a, a retail space with people coming and going.
All right, but that use couldn't have been very long because the Art Institute hasn't been there that long. What was prior, what was the prior commercial use?
I'm not sure.
It was a real estate, that's what I remember. Real estate office.
So I've, I've lived in this location for almost four years, three and a half years, and it's been, it was the Art Institute's space.
Sure, I understand that, but the Art Institute actually, relative to some of us, is a newcomer. Other questions?
Just a couple more. The outside door, outermost door, I take it, is not locked. It's not a buzzer door.
That's incorrect. It is locked, and it is the buzzer door. So that, that is the door that would have to be propped open in order to allow access to the space.
And the inner door is, when it, when the career office was there, the outer door was a buzzer door?
Both doors are on the buzzer, but the, you have to have the outer one propped open in order to have access to the space.
As, as, as a convenience store, I understand.
Yeah.
As a career office, was the outer door propped open, or was it operated by...
There was no policy to prop it open. I think it depended on the weather. The residents would close it, but the art, art people would open or close it depending on their preference as well. The setup is outer door lobby with mailboxes and those sorts of things, and the entrance to this space, and then inner door and entrance to our stairwell.
Okay. Is there, just out of curiosity, is there a handicapped entrance issue with respect to this? If it's, if these renovations are done and it's turned into commercial space?
So there are, there are steps only, I think, is what you're getting at.
Right. Looking at the plan, there are steps only, and I'm just wondering whether the ADA is triggered here.
The building commissioner didn't mention it in his letter, which is...
And, and the third question relates to the statement that the external face cannot be modified because it's a historical building to give access directly into this space. I'm not sure that that's necessarily true. I think it's a historical building. There would be a demolition delay, certainly, but you're not in a local historic district here, and it may...
I can tell you my source for that belief, if you're, if you'd like.
Yeah, sure.
The, the puppet theater that is also part of the building had a, at the last condo association meeting that I attended, which I believe was the one two years ago, they had some slight renovations and a painting and sign that they wanted to put up. And the condo association's management company's legal counsel had advised them, had brought something to the condo association that said, you have to be careful what you modify because, you know, because of the status of this building, even if you get approval from the condo association to make these changes, the historic preservation law is triggered. So that's my source for that belief. It's not, that's my source for that.
There might have been some sort of preservation easement when the condo conversion was made.
I, I don't know, but I, let me just, yeah.
Please speak into the microphone, please, into the microphone.
The last, the last business down, the third business is Salon Studio. They got their own entrance. I think they did that by...
The hair salon, you mean? Yes, yes.
So they got like five steps to the salon. So I think they built that, that wasn't there when the building was built. So I believe it's, it's not an issue to have a separate entrance for the building.
I mean, if that's the case, why don't they go back and work on it?
I, I, it seems like there might be something in the condo docks. I don't know. I remember there was something, the owner of the building was the founder of the puppet showplace, and there's perhaps something about the way the condo docks were created. I had this dim, dim recollection, but I wouldn't know the details. And certainly, if the condo association's attorney expressed concerns, there may be something in the condo docks. That's all I can imagine. I know, I know she was very concerned about preserving the building. That was a personal commitment, so. Before we spend any more time on this, I, I believe we don't have enough information to make a decision right now, and lacking the building commissioner and others, I'm awfully sorry, but I'm afraid, I'm going to suggest that unless someone has a strong sense that we can go ahead, that we have to hold the vote. Are you sure there is one more gentleman here to make a public comment? Well, we'll hear that, but I'm just going on record that I'm not sure we can take a vote. Slakman Daly?
Yeah, I just want to ask if we're gonna take this up again, Mr. Minius or his attorney. One of the points brought up by this gentleman who lives in the building was his property values. I don't believe that is something we are allowed to take into consideration on this. And, and, you know, when you buy space over a commercial space, I think you're, you're taking, you're rolling the dice. But I do think he had a couple of legitimate concerns. One was the safety of access into the apartment areas. And I would ask, maybe when you come back, if you can perhaps look at your plans again and figure out some way to, you know, have a, address that concern. And the, the second issue is the rodents and, and that sort of thing.
That's easily, I mean, first of all, we have, you have, in terms of people going in and out, you have the puppet theater, and you have the hair salon. So you have a lot of puppet people going in, probably more than would be going into the convenience store. As to the pests, that's easily resolved with any store, as required by the Board of Health, I'm sure. Pest control and a routine, weekly regimen, or whatever it might be that would be required to satisfy that, that's an easy issue. And, you know, as well as the, any...
Well, I think it would be good for us to hear a little more about your plans of dealing with that. But when you say the puppet showcase and the hair salon, do people go through those establishments to get to apartments upstairs? I mean, this...
See, that's, that's, that's a mischaracterization. You do not go near. It's like a typical entrance way to an apartment complex. You have the mailboxes, postman's gotta get in. So I'm not sure where this buzzer thing is because it's required by law to be kept open in order for the postman to be able to make deliveries of the mail. So my understanding is that first entrance is kept open, and it's, it's an area like a typical apartment area, and then you have the main entrance up to the residences up there. So there's no contact between the residences upstairs or wherever they might be beyond the main door versus where the convenience store is to the right as you're going up the stairs.
But the puppet, but the puppet showplace and the, and the hair salon don't use that same common entrance. They have their own, right?
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're, they all have different, you're right.
The, the point seems to have been that the only shared entrance with residential occupants is this single one.
The hair salon has a separate entrance, but the puppet theater also...
Has a separate entrance?
That, that's correct.
Okay. Slakman Mermel, just a minute. No, you may not. Slakman Mermel?
I'd also like to hear your plans for deliveries when you come back. You know, any other establishment of this, of this nature that we've licensed would have a delivery entrance in the back.
There is a delivery entrance, there is an entrance in the back.
Okay. Well, that might, that might resolve the issue, but I, based on this gentleman Eric's comments, the idea of deliveries being made through the front, people trying to get out in the morning and be right underneath bedrooms is not exactly an acceptable setup, but...
The alleyway.
And, and where would the trucks pull up?
On the street.
Okay.
On the street or in the alleyway? What street? Yeah, I know.
So they, they would be pulling up right underneath people's bedrooms for morning deliveries and then carrying or wheeling their deliveries around to the back to when the...
This is a business district. I mean, some of these points are being raised are a little bit beyond purview of this board being able to consider. We have a commercial condominium, we have a business district, which is, includes convenience stores and all sorts of things that are like that. I mean, when these people moved into the residential condominiums, that's what they bargained for. That's what they got. So this whole thing of loss of value, I mean, zoning board would throw that right out. It wouldn't be applicable here. But we'd be glad to address any of the issues that you have.
I just want to point out to you that we made the puppet showcase when put in extra soundproofing and so forth because the neighbors above were making noise. So those are issues are of concern to this board.
I agree upon that, I agree. But I'm just saying, some of the issues that are being raised are a little bit beyond purview.
I think we're just trying to get a sense of the scope of the potential impact here so that we can make any decisions about what we may or may not be able to appropriately weigh in on.
And we may find that in order to provide a license, we'll put some conditions on it. At the moment, we're not in a position to make that determination. So what we're doing is saying we need more information, and yes, it is zoned appropriately, but there are conditions that are unusual, if not unique, and that is certainly having a shared entrance with residential owners that is different from the other commercial properties in that property along that building in the condo association. All right, I'm very sorry, sir, we have not allowed you to speak. Would you like to speak?
Just briefly, my name's Hyrum Montero. I'm here with my mother. We own properties there at 39 and 42 Station Street, which are neighbors to 34. We do share some of their concerns. We hope that those are recognized and appreciated by the board. And specifically, too, I think one of the things we're looking at is the delivery aspect because if it's not done in front of the building, which is Station Street, then most likely they'll be pulling ahead, blocking our driveway at 39 and 42 Station Street. We already deal with people waiting to pick up people from the train stop, blocking the, the parking garage and driveway to our house. So just looking prospectively, we want to know what their, what the provisions are that they're taking as far as delivery.
All right, and just to be clear, if I understood the, the comment that deliveries would be made from the rear, access to the rear would be an alleyway off Harvard Street, unless I'm mistaken? An al, you have access to the alleyway from Station Street? Not for a vehicle? No. Vehicles can't... That's what I thought. Okay, all right, so how, it will be entering from Station Street. Well, that's not from the rear. That's from the front. Let's be clear about this. Okay. Through the shared hallway. Okay, all right, all right. I think we, we need to have a better description of your delivery plan. We'll talk with the health inspector to see if there's been any evidence of rodents, and if so, there'll need to be a plan to deal with them. I don't believe that that has been alleged for this location. It was somewhere else, and therefore, I think is an irrelevant allegation. But there needs to be a health sign-off to be sure. Any other questions? Yes, Slakman Banka?
Yeah, I, I am concerned about the security issue, and I've heard conflicting statements about the outer door being locked and a buzzer door versus the outer door, which certainly, if this were a convenience store, would have to be propped open and would be kept open at all times. And I would be curious to know, interested in knowing whether that is, that would be a change from the current conditions in terms of the security of the building. And related to that is the question of whether you could have access directly in to this commercial property from Station Street without going through that shared lobby and without requiring that that outer door be propped open, whether it is now or is not propped open. I just don't know from this discussion today what the situation is now, and I don't know what the options would be. And I'm not aware of anything that would flatly prohibit modification of the front of this building. modification of the front of this building to permit access directly into this commercial condo space, but there may be.
So to answer your, your two questions, I'll provide clarifying documentation for you. But to be clear, the outer security door, you have to pass through in order to get to this office space where the convenience store would be?
I understand that. If that door is unlocked, though, it's been-
It is, it is not unlocked. The postman has access to the inner lobby. Even during the winter, we get our mail when the door is-
He has a key to the outer door?
That's correct.
Okay.
And it is buzzard. There is, I, I believe your second question is, is there any, is there any way to get to this retail space without going through that buzzard door? And the answer is no, not currently.
Right, I understand that. The, the, just looking at the plan, I see that. My question is whether that would be foreclosed by condo documents or some other, I'm not aware of any town bylaw that would prohibit that, but I don't know whether there might be something of which I'm unaware, or whether the condo documents might prohibit that. But insofar as this might boil down to the issue of security for the residential units inside, that might be the issue that's on the table.
Okay, Selectman Goldstein. And before, sorry, would you be sure you leave a copy of your letter with our clerk over here?
Yes, I have all of the, the letter signed by all of the-
Okay, yeah, thank you. Segment Goldstein?
Thanks. I, I, I just want to say, I mean, I agree that they should come back with a plan to address how your deliver, deliveries are going to be done, how your rodent control's going to be done. But I got to tell you, I, I, in terms of security and access, I can think of many other examples of retail stores that are, are set up in this manner. It's not the norm, I agree, but up and down Newbury Street, there are lots of businesses that enter off of the, the, the walk-up in, in, in the common area, and then there's a, a locked door afterwards. And you're saying that your locked door is in front and in back. You know, that's between you guys. That's, that's your internal condo association problem. But in terms of having access to the building through a, a common area, I don't, I don't have a specific problem with that. And I know other situations like that in Brookline as well. So I agree that they should be doing more, and they should be presenting more to us. I don't see the, the entrance way as, as a non-starter here.
Selectman Binka?
Yeah. One, one final question. And that is, this, this plan doesn't show what's inside the second door. And I guess one possibility would be if, if the issue is mailboxes, well, I guess the problem is buzzing somebody in to that outer door, or the second door. They're, they're in your building at that point. I don't know what's beyond that. Could the mailboxes be inside? Is there another option for another security door inside, assuming that, that this entryway, this common entryway becomes open to the public? And I, I, that is something that I think you guys might want to discuss or argue about.
I think that immediately inside this door is the, is the stairwell. I, I guess we'd have to take up with the condo association if this goes forward. I don't want to, I don't want to speak for them.
Right.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay. And we will, this, this is not posted as a public hearing, so I don't believe we have to continue this, but we will schedule it for our calendar at a time when you can come forward with some more information. So you need to get in touch with the Selectmen's Office when you're prepared to come back. We'll, we'll take it up whenever you're ready. Okay? Sorry about this confusion. Okay, then we have another common victualer-
I'm sorry, one, one quick request.
Sorry.
Could, could you ensure that that notice goes to the residents of this condo? I was the only one, our apartment was the only one who actually received the notice. It was a surprise to the, the rest of the residents, I think. Just make sure that the, the interested residents are all informed.
Are, are email addresses on your letter?
Uh, no, but I can come back with them.
That would make life very easy.
That would certainly make things much more efficient if we could do that.
And if, if those could just come to the Selectmen's Office.
It should have gone to the condo association. Is there not an officer who represents the condo association?
Uh, there, there is a condo association.
Or is it a management company?
All that, all that I'm actually aware of is that the letter was on, was in my mailbox, and nobody else that I spoke to had received it, the, the one-sheet notification.
Really?
I don't, I don't have knowledge of anything else that might have happened.
Okay. And, but you did say, you mentioned that you had spoken to the management. Did you speak to the management company about this particular-
No, that, that was describing the meeting two years ago about the story.
Separately, okay, all right. Thank you. Well, you might help us by providing us with the name and address of the management company. Okay? Because we could certainly be sure they're notified. Okay. Then I guess I'm going to suggest we move on to item 10. Aysel Aina, doing business as Pan Roma, 1026 Commonwealth Avenue. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so this is an application for a common victualer's license, and there are a couple of questions I'm going to ask you right off. Do you have a lease for these premises?
Yes.
It's not indicated in your application. We don't have evidence of an, of a lease.
Yes, I do have a lease.
You have a lease, okay. And we also ask for a new applicant to provide a menu. We do not have a menu. Actually, your, your thing says fast food, which is a pretty general category.
All right. I have the menu.
That would be good. Could you please give us copies of the menu?
This is my old store, so this is going to need this name.
Okay.
This has a copy. So this is the old menu.
Good, thank you. We can just-
Just, we'll pass it around. Thank you. All right. So this is the one you're proposing?
Yes.
More or less? Okay. Okay.
This one, my old store.
Mm-hmm. Fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's good. All right. Take a look. I gather then you will be continuing in a similar, it'll be a similar operation-
Yes, same operation.
From before.
Same.
Pizza.
Pizza, solid, yes. Same. That's different, probably different pizza, like-
Okay. Any questions, members of the board? I have a, a couple of comments. There is a suggestion that previously an own, the owner had an entertainment license. Are you intending to have any kind of entertainment?
Uh, there was, I just basically plasma TV, take back, and I don't really have anything, just like-
Okay. If, if you want to provide television or other entertainment, you must apply for an entertainment license?
So I play for that.
You, you should do that? You can do that through the Selectmen's Office?
I can do that?
You, you may apply.
All right.
Yes. If you want to have what we call recorded music or television, you need an entertainment license.
Uh, right now I don't have TV. I take his TV back. That's why I don't apply. I don't buy TV at-
Okay. Well, when you, when you choo-, when you have decided you want to do that-
Oh, I'm gonna add-
You need to apply for an entertainment license.
If you change your mind and-
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I can apply that. I know, like, yeah, I can do that.
If you choose, if you don't want, it's okay.
Sure, yeah. When I choose, yeah, I can apply for that.
Okay.
This type of license.
And you said, in, in the application, it, it says that you have prior experience in food, but you didn't explain what it was. So are you suggesting that this is a different restaurant where you were previously-
Well, this was my store, actually.
This wrap and roll was, was your store?
Yes. And I was six years managing the place, and after I was-
Okay. For the record, we asked for this information on your application, not coming to us tonight with, when you come? It should have been included in the application?
Yeah. I was, I don't have the menu yet because the, for Pan Roma, I was waiting for a hearing. So basically, I just have hard copy. That's why I don't put them in file.
Okay. Well, we, we certainly got letters from people who have eaten food you pre-prepared, I think, in this location. Is that right?
Yes, some of them there. So I was, they're from both store, actually. Like, so I was for four years that place, six years managing the place this one, so.
That one, which is not this one?
Well, they want to, like, some letter from down, actually.
Okay.
And some of them, they want from back, and they together from this one. I was six years managing the place.
Okay. When you fill out an application, we really would like you to explain to us where you have worked previously. We need to be, we need to know that you have experience in food service. And without this, we don't know that. Okay, sorry.
They can't hear you on the TV.
All right. Good news here is that we know you have been through Safe Surf training.
Yes, I do.
And we know that you have arranged for waste disposal, which is also very important. So I've had my questions. Any other questions for this application?
I have no questions.
Yep. Selectman Daly?
Um, I, I see that some of the, some of the letters of recommendation refer to Mrs. Aina. Is that, are you going to be the manager, or is-
Well, it's my wife, I'm managing. So basically, it's just her name. I have food certificate as my name, so I'm the managing place.
Okay.
And-
Actually, we need to know who will be the manager.
I'm gonna be the manager.
Okay. And your name is-
She's gonna be there too, basically.
Okay. All right. But your name is Aysel Aina?
My wife, actually.
That's her name. What exactly is your name?
Ayan Aina.
Is that written down here somewhere?
It should be my name there too.
No, all we see is Aysel.
I, A-Y-H-A-N.
Yes.
You have listed as the manager-
A-Y-H-A-N.
Yes. I, Ihan Aina.
Ah, okay, all right.
The gentleman with the Safe Surf certification.
Yes, right.
And on the second page of the packet, he's listed as the manager.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Um, any other questions, comments, members of the board?
So your wife owns the business, and you do the work?
Well, I'm gonna do all, basically money I'm putting, so she just gonna-
Okay. It is our understanding that you do not plan to change the physical layout? The premises will be the same?
Uh, just menu.
Okay.
And just name.
Then the other thing you need to be aware is that any sign you wish to put up must be, you have to come to the planning board-
Yes.
And they will review the sign and approve it.
Yes, I do have, like, license that he's gonna decide to bring it. I know all this.
Okay, all right. Selectman Daly?
I know through, by Brookline.
I see that you are proposing to be open until 2:00 in the morning?
Uh, well, they have like 2:00 AM, but I just, right now I'm doing 11:00 to 11:00, but.
Okay, well, just a block or so behind you, there are, are homes, and, and people get concerned about noise, you know, is it very light?
Was crushed, tree lightly, most all business open except to me, Tiantong. A lot of places open, but, and we have really private parking in the back.
Okay. Would you do, um, do you make deliveries?
Yes, I do.
And do you have space where a vehicle-
Yes.
For deliveries can be parked?
I have three spots with the-
You do?
Yes, my landlord gives me three spots. Actually, I have, like, more space parking if you need it.
Yeah. All right. This is an opportunity for anyone who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition of this application. I see none. Okay. In that case, members of the board, without any other questions, I will move to approve the application of Aysel Aina, doing business as Pan Roma, for a common victular license at 1026 A Commonwealth Avenue. All in favor, please say aye.
Selectman Sherman DeWitt, can I, I just make a friendly amendment that provided that he provides the copy of the lease and, and the final menu and whatever that, to our office?
Mm-hmm. I think I have like seven years and four, four option.
Okay.
Well, you're supposed to give a copy to our office.
It's part of the record that we require normally for this-
Sure, no problem. I do have, like, that's why even don't change, like, my lease, I just take, just transfer the lease to my name. I still have seven years and plus like eight years, I think, option.
Okay, all right.
So there was release. That's even, I don't change the name, like, lease. Just transfer the lease.
Patty, you get the conditions? Okay. All right. Then I'm going to move without repeating this. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Marmel?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Now we go back to what I thought was going to be the lengthy one. Warrant Article Five, Neighborhood Conservation District Proposal, presented by the Planning Department. Mr. Levine, come and tell us about it.
Thank you, Madam Chair and the board. I'm, I'm going to provide a, a general overview of Articles Five and Six, and I'm going to hand the baton off to Selectman Binka, without whom these articles certainly would not have been possible under the constrained timeframe we worked under. As you remember, in 2005, the town completed a comprehensive plan, working on the tail end of that process, and simultaneously, the Preservation Division had received a grant from, from the state to work on looking at neighborhood conservation districts or architectural preservation districts as a possible tool for Brookline. There was a study completed, which is available on the town's website. I have a hard copy here. Much of it is appendices, but what it really said is there are certain situations under which neighborhood conservation districts have been used as an alternative to conventional zoning and to traditional local historic districts under Chapter 40(c). It outlined that there are some key differences between these districts and traditional local historic districts. I'll go through a couple of the most important ones here. One, that most neighborhood conservation districts allow residents and property owners to determine what aspects of a neighborhood should be preserved, rather than strictly following the Secretary of Interior standards. May end up providing lesser or more protection than a conventional district. Certainly doesn't have to be limited to what's listed pretty clearly in, in Chapter 40(c) and in the Secretary's standards. This one, and I think it's perhaps the most important one, is that the focus is on the characteristics of the area, not necessarily details related to individual buildings, but the overall feel of an area. That could include its landscape, that could include the massing of buildings, but not necessarily the same level of detail on individual buildings as a local historic district. It also emphasizes that in some situations, there are not, there isn't a commission with discretionary review authority, but an administrative approach that is done, provided certain standards are met. That's similar to form-based zoning or form-based code. But it said that that's not always the case. That really what's, what's useful about this tool to some extent is that it can be tailored to a number of different situations. And then in addition, it relates that oftentimes it's part of a zoning bylaw or a zoning ordinance in a local community, but certainly not in every case. And the study was completed in 2005. It's something that we've always thought about as an alternative when various land use discussions have come up. Most recently, when the Lawrence Local Historic District was proposed, there was discussion about a neighborhood conservation district as an alternative. And as part of that discussion, my department had worked with some residents of the Lawrence area to develop a new model bylaw that was significantly updated from the model bylaw in this study, and that we felt was a good basis for any future neighborhood conservation districts that might go forward. For various reasons, the LHD just decided as the appropriate approach in that area right now. But when there became some interest in doing a neighborhood conservation district in Hancock Village, we basically took out the, the draft bylaw that had been worked on at that point. Selectman Binka became very involved and put in a lot of very long and sort of loyal hours to this. There were a number of other people that provided input. And what came out of this is really Article Five and Article Six, significantly modified from what was developed for Lawrence, but, but really at its heart, the same basic framework. This can provide a tool to look at things that are different than what is required under a local historic district. It recommends setting up a separate commission for each neighborhood conservation district that might be created. It allows some leeway in creating design standards for each district, first as part of a bylaw that would enable that district, and then later as rules and regulations are passed for that specific district. I think at this point, I'll, I'll hand it off to Selectman Binka to go through some of the details of these, of these two articles.
Thank you. I, I don't have that much to add. What I would add is that there are two- there are two articles, and they are, um, designed to serve different purposes. Um, Article Five is the one that, um, sets up the framework of neighborhood conservation districts in Brookline, and, um, recognizes that this, uh, becomes a planning tool, uh, and a, a land, uh, land use tool in the town that, um, uh, is designed to, uh, uh, address, uh, the, um, issues of neighborhood conservation districts as they may be designated in the future. And, um, the, um, Article Six, in turn, uh, sets up a neighborhood conservation district in Hancock Village in that area. Um, they, um, are designed to operate such that, uh, Article Five would be passed. That is the one that, uh, presents the, um, overall concept, uh, for, um, neighborhood conservation districts. And, uh, I, I, rather than saying, uh, land use, let me say, it would preserve the general character of neighborhoods by ensuring, uh, for example, that the scale and composition, massing and design is compatible with, uh, other existing structures in the surrounding area. Um, uh, the, uh, general article, Article Five, allows specific districts to be, um, created, and, um, Article Six, uh, does that for the Hancock Village area. The Hancock Village, um, area, uh, was a, uh, Garden City Apartment complex that was developed between nineteen forty-six and nineteen forty-nine. It was one of the most important developments of that type in New England. Uh, it is marked by, uh, the Garden Village style of apartments, uh, Garden City Apartments of low density and low scale with, uh, separate entrances, um, two stories with peaked roofs, uh, substantial common open space, pedestrian and vehicular circulation within the area, natural landscape features such as pudding stone outcroppings preserved, and a green belt established around, uh, the, uh, the development. And, um, there was an agreement, uh, back at the time the development was, uh, was done, that the development was done in conformity with that agreement, and, um, uh, it has existed as part of the fabric of the neighborhood in that form for, um, more than sixty years. Um, the purpose of Article Six would be to retain the integrity of, uh, location and design and setting and materials and workmanship, uh, that, uh, the Hancock Village neighborhood has, uh, carried to this time, and, uh, to retain it as a compatible part of the fabric of, of that community and the adjacent neighborhood. So it's, it's really a, a two-step, uh, process, one general and one specific. This would, uh, create, uh, the possibility of other, uh, neighborhood conservation districts in the town, um, as, uh, town meeting sees fit.
Okay. Um, questions, members of the board? Selectman Goldstein?
Couple of questions. And, and by the way, thank you, Selectman Benka, and Mr. Levine, and everybody who participated in this. I think this is a, uh, gonna be a valuable tool for, uh, not just the immediate context that we're contemplating, but, uh, I think it's gonna be a valuable tool for many years to come for projects and proposals as yet unknown. Uh, I do have a few questions, though. Um, do I understand that there, there is no statutory scheme that this arises under? Can, or can you describe the, the authority that we have to, to enact this, this type of a regulate, a bylaw?
There have been NCDs that have been passed in other communities in Massachusetts, basically as a home rule option. It doesn't require legislative action, since there is not an equivalent to forty C or forty A for neighborhood conservation districts. Uh, Mass Historic has told us, and we've pretty much confirmed through the existence of these other districts, that it's simply something that's passed by local bylaw.
Okay. So it, does it need a home rule petition with the legislature?
No, we don't believe it does. And, and Wellesley didn't receive one, Lincoln didn't receive one.
So in five point ten point ten, where it says, "Any applicant or person aggrieved by a determination of the commission may appeal as provided for in Mass General Laws", what, what in weird does Mass General Laws provide for, for an appeal?
Selectman Benka, do you want to?
Yeah, I, I would think that the, uh, provision would be, um, under the, the general appeal of, uh, administrative decisions. Is it thirty B, uh, general, uh, Mass General Laws, such, uh, Chapter thirty B? Yeah, there's, there is no.
Just like Representative Frank couldn't quote the.
Fair enough.
One earlier.
There's, uh, there is no.
You haven't memorized Mass General Laws, though.
There is no specific, uh, enabling legislation for neighborhood conservation districts the way there is for zoning changes, or the way there is for local historic districts. A two thousand and ten, um, publication of the Mass Historical Commission, uh, provided that, uh, NCDs are created by, quote, "A general bylaw that requires a simple majority vote of town meeting or city council," unquote, uh, and that it would be, quote, "Adopted pursuant to home rule authority," unquote.
And, uh, just to add, it, it's my understanding that none of the existing ones, which are quite different, they're disparate, I should say, they're, they're, there's not a, they're not, um, as similar as a local historic district would be, all right, have not been challenged in court, so.
Not, not yet.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's just, you know, that, at least we know, they haven't been challenged.
Um, is there any reason to, and I know this, this, that this is, that there is no case law on this yet, but is there any reason to believe or worry or be concerned that there is a, uh, a minimum number of parcels that have to be affected by a district that you declare? In other words, is there an equivalent of the spot zoning concern that we have in, in zoning here?
Um, we thought about that, and I guess my only response is there are single property zoning districts that have been upheld, and there are single property local historic districts that have been upheld. Um, so under the proper circumstances, I'm not particularly worried about that, and in this case, that's something I'm not particularly worried about.
Okay. Um, in terms of, of the timing of, uh, these warrant articles and the Hancock Village proposal, is there any understanding or concern about when this, the, the, uh, NCD would have to be passed in relation to the, uh, building application, the, the building permit application, or the approval of that application? Is there, is there a point at which the fact that we've, we've declared an NCD is too late in the process? I guess that's my question.
Well, uh, to some extent, this is, this is something new for the town of Brookline, but, um, generally, a bylaw would take effect upon approval by the Attorney General after town meeting, um, and one would have to receive a building permit for a project prior to that date in order to be grandfathered and have it not apply to their particular project.
So if the building permit were granted before the Attorney General approved the, the bylaw, it would be too late?
That's, that's correct, by my understanding, yes.
And the timeframe is, we have town meeting, we, if it passes, it usually, was it ninety days or?
Uh, up to ninety days, I believe.
Up to ninety days possible, so, you know, from mid-November, plus ninety days would be the, um, timeframe for such a possibility.
Yeah, I, let me, let me just interject. I, I am not sure of what the effective date of the statute would be. Um, uh, it, it could conceivably be when the Attorney General, um, approves it, but, uh, I'm not sure whether it might, might not be effective as of the date it's passed.
It's a bylaw, but not zoning, so we have to find.
It is not zoning.
I think we need town council's opinion about what, how, what the status.
I would defer to town council on this question, just to be sure.
I would too. It's possible that it's the date of the vote. It would not be as per zoning the date of the first ad.
And I wonder if maybe if we don't like the answer to that question, if something might be inserted into the, into the warrant article that.
To give it an effective date.
Right.
Yeah. Seems like a useful, um, helpful to everybody.
Uh, can you just describe a, a little bit for me about how this, um, how the, the, this bylaw would, would interact with the Brookline Demolition Delay Bylaw? I know there's a paragraph in there about it, but does it supersede it? Does it, uh, it, it, does it, does it make it moot, I suppose, is the question?
It does not supersede it. It would be a parallel process, as would the zoning review process.
In a way, does it make it moot, since, uh, demolition could be conceivably, if you're, if you're in an, a, a NCD, uh, um, you, Brookline Demolition Delay Bylaw would only delay you, whereas, um, a ruling preventing a demolition under an NCD would permanently.
In practice, you might be right. There, there are certainly theoretical situations where an NCD commission might grant someone the ability to tear down a building, but the Preservation Commission did not agree with them, and might uphold a stay for up to eighteen months.
Or vice versa.
Or vice versa.
Thank you. Um, I was a little confused. Uh, Section five point ten point six, "It shall be a responsibility of the staff of the commission, with the concurrence of the Chair of the commission, to, to determine whether a proposed alteration or other project exempt from review, is exempt from review, and they shall have ten days to make this determination." So is, is that, is this deciding whether it's exempt from review? This is done without a hearing?
It, it's the current practice with the Preservation Commission.
It is. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Selectman Benka, this is very similar to what happens with local historic districts now, where there are certain things that are just exempt from review, um, and staff consults with the Chair of the, in that case, the Preservation Commission. If they view it as exempt, they say, we, this is exempt, and they have a certain time period to make that decision.
And there would be no requirement that there be a public hearing to discuss that?
There isn't generally, um, because if, when there's any doubt, they, they bring it to the Preservation Commission. But there are simple things like replacing clabberds with clabberds that are pretty straightforward.
And there are, there are specific exemptions, um, items that, uh, simply cannot be regulated as part of this, um, and that's, um, uh, in the statute and, and would, or in the bylaw and, and would be, um, uh, clearly exempt.
And I just would like to point out that, um, there are additional, additional administrative burdens which will come from passing, um, these bylaws. Um, to not permit the certificate of exemption under these circumstances for minor changes would probably clog the system beyond repair. Just think about it that way.
Thanks. Uh, last question, I promise. Uh, the, um, it goes back to the appellate rights. So the people who, the, the person aggrieved is the applicant in any immediate abutter. Uh, any thought given to giving appellate rights to people beyond immediate
There was some thought given to it?
Okay, all right. I said it was the last question, but, uh, so why, why have we limited to, limited it to, uh, I'm sure you, there's good reasons for it, but why limited to immediate abutters?
Um, we felt that it would be an appropriate, um, uh, an appropriate limitation to this bylaw at this point. It, you know, it certainly could be amended, you know, you could give, uh, uh, any, um, uh, any person in a neighborhood conservation district or anybody abutting a neighborhood conservation district appellate rights. Um, but, um, the, the thought was that, uh, at least as a initial, uh, implementation of this provision, um, we wanted it to be not something that was so open-ended.
Okay. Thank you.
Other members of the board with questions? Um, I have a question. I guess I'm gonna direct to Selectman Benka, having to do with the, um, the local oversight and the provision for different sizes of oversight. Are we calling them committees?
Right.
Um, do you have a, a guideline for when there should be five or when there should be seven?
Now, this, um, I will say that, um, the initial draft of this, um, started out as a seven-member commission, uh, with four appointed by the Chair of the Preservation Commission, uh, being either regular or alternate members of the Preservation Commission, and three being other citizens of the town, either, um, neighbors, uh, mem, uh, residents, abutters, people with special expertise, whatever. But essentially.
Who would be appointed by?
By the selectmen.
By the selectmen.
So four, um, four, uh, identified by the Chair of the Preservation Commission from the Preservation Commission, three appointed by the Board of Selectmen. Uh, the concern was expressed by Preservation Commission staff that the Preservation Commission is already, uh, burdened with, um, the, uh, Demolition Delay Bylaw and, uh, local historic district bylaw, and the number of local historic districts that have been created. And, uh, they made a request that, or suggested that the, uh, number be reduced to five. And, um, uh, it, it was reduced to five is essentially the default, uh, three from the Preservation Commission, either regular members or alternates, and two appointed by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, but that's, that's a number of, 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 of appointees as opposed to staff?
Correct.
That's.
No, I, I'm sorry. I, the, the burden, well, they, there, there are two.
There will be a burden on the staff, but I guess I was asking, why, is there an option? Do you pick and choose whether there's five or seven?
I suspect that five will be the, the default unless there's a good reason to go to seven.
And who will make that decision? Who, who, in the end, I'm real, my real question to you is how do we know whether it's five or seven? Flip a coin?
No, I wouldn't do that. Um, I think as drafted, it was, uh, it was a decision of, of this board as to whether it would be five or seven.
It does say as determined by the Board of Selectmen.
And, um.
All right, maybe I missed that.
And there are no, yeah, and there are no, um, uh, no.
Ah, okay, all right. Okay.
No particular constraints. I, I think, um, the major issue here was, um, the need to feel our way as we go forward to see, uh, whether this is, uh, a burden on the Preservation Commission, um, both commissioners and staff, and that is something that, uh, I'm very sensitive to. Um, there, uh, I will say that there are various other structures in the state for commissions like this. For example, Cambridge has five-member, uh, neighborhood conservation district commissions with one member of their historical commission and four residents or neighbors, uh, uh, of the conservation district. And, um, uh, that has been criticized as being, uh, too insular, not enough expertise, who knows who, who's friends with whom. Um, and, um, uh, I, in light of those sorts of comments, um, I wanted to stay away from that and to have the majority, uh, at least initially, and we can always obviously change this in a later town meeting, uh, if, if it's found that it doesn't work, but at, at least initially have a majority from the Preservation Commission.
Well, I, I, my comment is that I do believe if we have additional districts of any kind, whether they're historic or neighborhood conservation, we should, um, pay very close attention to the burden this will add to staffing.
Exactly.
And conceivably, it may be, uh, worth considering over time, um, looking at the composition of the Preservation Commission, which fortunately, unlike many other commissions, actually has alternate members, so they can draw on a larger population. Um, but that might be something also to consider, just because I think there are gonna be many moving parts here.
Exactly. And, and let me, um, I, I don't know how much of a, uh, a commitment to make about staff, but, um, uh, we will, uh, if these are passed, uh, we will staff these. Uh, the Planning Department is being, uh, looked at right now. Um, and, uh, this certainly will be one of the issues that, um, that will be discussed in, in connection with, uh, staffing within the Planning Department. Um, and, um, Chairman DuWitt, you are absolutely correct. One of the, um, uh, great things about the Preservation Commission is that we have both regular and alternate members, and this bylaw allows the Chair of the Preservation Commission to name alternate members. name alternate members to sit on the neighborhood conservation districts. So, insofar as those individuals are perhaps less committed right now than the regular members of the Preservation Commission might be, the Chair of the Preservation Commission does have the option to name them as the representatives of the Preservation Commission to this district commission.
I actually understand that many of them do attend regularly, so it seems to be one of the, a good model for this kind of expansion.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Other questions? Selectman Daley?
Chairman DeWitt, I just note that I think we have some people here who are interested in this, and I'm wondering if we could hear some comments.
At, as soon as you say you don't want to ask any more questions. All right. I do believe we have some members of the public who are interested in these articles. If you would like to speak, please come forward to the microphone. Although I'm going to ask you to, please keep your comments brief, but go ahead. Identify yourself first.
I don't even want to say. I'm so bored of this topic.
Who are you?
Alyssa Jonas, town meeting member from Precinct 16, and you should be glad that the planning board meeting came before this meeting, so you didn't have to deal with a bunch of neighbors. So, I just want to speak on behalf of the overwhelming majority of our neighborhood that supports both warrant article five, which have passed, we think will really give the town the most effective tool to preserve our neighborhoods, and I think it's something the town has been crying out for, for years. So, it's so exciting if that actually were to get passed. And we also, of course, support Article Six, which applies the neighborhood conservation district law to the area of South Brookline that comprises Hancock Village. And I would, we all want to thank very much Dick Benka and the planning department for putting so much work into this article, and also Dennis DeWitt for all of his assistance. And something that I just thought about, which I didn't really include in here, was a discussion about the spot zoning. Can you mention the spot zoning concern? But Hancock Village already is, has its own zoning, and no one has ever found that to be spot zoning, and I think it's because it's already such a large area, it warrants its own zoning. And if that's the case, then I think we can also carry that forward to being treated as a neighborhood for neighborhood conservation districts. And I know the historical perspective on Hancock Village has been discussed many times. I'm not sure how much I want to summarize that because it's late. However, there is, there's one element that seems to get confused over and over again, and that is how, how the land is specified to be used under zoning and the buffer zone versus the rest of Hancock Village, which is multifamily. So, I think I just want to go over that right now. So, John Hancock Insurance Company and the town worked closely to get this, this housing together for veterans, and they wanted to do it in a way that was attractive and fit in with the neighborhood, making townhouses that were situated close together so that there would be, also be compensating green space. And the result was one of the first cluster housing developments in the country, and the particular type of cluster housing built on this site was part of the Garden Village movement with attractively designed and architecturally coherent small-scale homes surrounded by beautiful landscaping. So, to ensure that the abutting homeowners would not be negatively affected by buildings, garages, or parking adjoining their backyards, the original single-family zoning was intentional. So, originally, the whole plot, which was the golf course, was zoned single-family. There was no specific zoning for green space, so it was single-family. So, at the time, when the changes were made to create Hancock Village, the strip of land that adjoined the neighboring houses, the zoning was not changed. It remained single-family S7. So, there's no written agreement on that particular strip of land about what should be done with it. It was just, the zoning wasn't changed. It was just kept single-family so that, with the understanding that it would remain green space, and because it was single-family, you couldn't put multifamily housing and apartments and large buildings on there. And that assumption was, the assumption that that would protect that green space was one that was assumed by town officials and abutters over the years. In fact, people moving to abutting homes would often require, inquire of the town planning department about that beautiful green space abutting their homes, and the planning department told them not to worry about it. It was protected from development. The view is also expressed by 1967 Board of Appeals decision, going back in history, which was denying a request by Hancock Village to build a parking lot in that zone, and it stated, quote, "The appellant Hancock Village would be within its right to build one-family houses on the proposed parking site, but a new road would have to be laid out to give access, and so this is not practical." And thus, the only other alternative would be to keep it as green space. And in years past, the planning board also specifically stated that the land was intentionally zoned S7 to provide an attractive buffer zone for neighboring homes. So, the town used zoning to preserve the land immediately abutting the neighboring single-family houses from multifamily development. That is maintaining single-family zoning on that land. However, the zoning laws were inadequate to ensure the preservation of the Garden Village development that was being planned for the majority of the site, the site that's outside of that buffer zone. And that was going to become multifamily. That's all there was to be able to change the zoning to allow that development to occur. So, to provide the town and the neighborhood with the assurance that the development would be built and maintained as John Hancock Insurance specified in its plans, that's where the written agreement came in. That agreement was drafted by the developer and the town and was signed by the developer. The agreement placed very specific restrictions on the portion of the property that was rezoned to accommodate multifamily housing. For example, no buildings taller than two and a half floors, only 12% of the land to be built upon, units built in townhouse style, et cetera. And this agreement was incorporated into the town law that changed the zoning in the nonbuffers zone area that was to become Hancock Village. So, essentially, this was contract zoning. Town meeting approved a change in zoning for the site from single-family to multifamily, conditioned upon the land being used as specified in the signed agreement. And so, warrant article 23 of 1946 of the laws passed by town meeting at the time includes the agreement verbatim. So, if you go to the town records, you'll see the whole agreement right in the warrant article. And John Hancock took great pride in developing such an attractive housing option that could both accommodate so many families, fit in with the character of the neighborhood, and by clustering the homes close together, also offer beautiful green space for which they hired Olmstead Associates, the landscaping firm of Frederick Law Olmstead, to do the landscaping. The zoning for the acres of land comprising Hancock Village, however, still leave much to be desired with regard to protecting this neighborhood from out-of-scale development that threatens the architectural coherence and beautiful landscaping that has been integral to this neighborhood for the past 70 years, 65 years. The current owner, as we all know, has proposed using what it views as excess open space for an expansion of this already fully developed land that is excessive in its massing and height and producing a high-density development in an otherwise low-density area, specifically while the rest of Precinct 16 has a land use density of about six dwellings per acre, which generally qualifies as low-density. Hancock Village is currently built up, has a land use density of about 12 dwellings per acre, which is generally designated median density and is of similar density to other cluster developments in the country. The current proposal would result in land use density of 22 dwellings per acre, if I've done my math right, which I'm not totally sure of, which qualifies as high-density, resulting in close to six times the density of the rest of the neighborhood. By designating Hancock Village as a neighborhood conservation district, it will serve to preserve this Garden Village development by ensuring that further development of the site will maintain the massing density, height, landscaping, and architectural integrity that exists on the land currently, and that seems a worthy first application of that designation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Regina Frarley, town meeting member from Precinct 16, resident of Reston Road for 46 years, and the purchaser of the family home that was built and the family who negotiated with John Hancock to preserve that buffer zone, which Alyssa referred to. There appears to be no binding agreement written somewhere. That said, I wasn't, I just got hold of this tonight, and I started to read it word for word, and then when you suddenly decided to allow the public, which it was not noticed as a public hearing, it was review, and you have stated you don't believe the public should be included in a public hearing on warrant articles. So, I didn't get an advance copy. I didn't come with that prep, and I'm quite sure my neighbors a lot more would have come if they knew that you were going to listen to it. So, I hope you will have a public hearing, a proper one, that is noticed the usual way. That said, in my close reading of pages up to 5.5 of the first article, I was looking for the bite. And legally, when you talk in terms of review, when you speak about oversight, when you speak about administering and regulating, under the law, those are really very vague terms that have no real binding force. And I didn't get to read the rest, and so I'd like to ask the author, could you tell me where the bite is, where the binding enforcement will be? That is more than just oversight, more than just recommendations, more than any of those kind of weaker words that really, don't really add up to much. And then, secondly, would you tell me how you see this playing out in Hancock Village? Thank you.
Yes. 5.10.5.
What page?
Page 5-5. "A building permit which shall include permits for demolition or an occupancy permit may not be issued for an altered," and you'll see that altered is broadly defined, "building structure, site, or property, or other reviewable project without the prior issuance of a certificate of appropriateness."
But I don't get the bite of the certificate of appropriateness. It's not defined there what the standards that will be not only required and forced that could prohibit the issuance of a certificate of appropriateness.
A certificate of appropriateness is a document granted by the Neighborhood Conservation District Commission that permits a reviewable project to proceed. And the reviewable project must be compatible, has to meet the design guidelines of the Neighborhood Conservation District.
I'm not sure I see that as very biting, but anyway, do you not also see therefore, though, that under the separability, which I grant you, I only glanced at the severance and separability of the articles, that any portion of that might end up in a court? For example, in the very demolition order section you just cited, you could theoretically, with this bylaw, extend the timeframe of the demolition, and I think a developer could quite reasonably say that you are adding a burden, an unreasonable burden, and take that to a court of law. And I wonder if you've thought of that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure that any bylaw could be challenged by a person aggrieved.
I'm thinking more of the fact that we have an existing long-term bylaw that gives the year demolition order.
Yeah.
I'm concerned that adding to it will not really change anything, only because it seems that legally that could be challenged, and I wondered if you-
Well, a later bylaw, and particularly given the specific terms of this, would essentially supersede, or could supersede, depending on the determination made, the demolition delay bylaw.
Okay. And could you tell me, the second part of the question was, how you see this playing out right now as written on Hancock Village?
I would hope that if passed by town meeting, we would have a neighborhood conservation district that would be in place with respect to Hancock Village.
And how do you see that looking? Is, I'm trying to be, see your vision, how this would apply. As a resident, I think I have a right to know how you see, how this could play out, and as a lawyer, I assume you've thought that through.
The guidelines for the Hancock Village Neighborhood Conservation District are in Article Six.
Mm-hmm. And I didn't get a chance because it was tonight, but-
Okay, well, yeah, I mean, I-
Do you see the, do you see building going on there? Let me simplify the question for you.
This committee would be set up, which would then look at plans and decide if they're appropriate or not.
Right.
And the first thing you're gonna-
But this got it.
It's not, it's not a prohibition.
Selectman Daley, this did not exist for seven years now, that it could have in 2005. It clearly is being brought now to the fore because of the issue of Hancock Village. I think it's a very fair question to ask the author of an article, what vision you had for the applicability of that article.
I think you need to read it because it's clear.
Well, he can, I think any citizen who just got it is entitled to get a clarity and not go home and have to read it later.
Actually-
This is the opportunity.
Ms. Frarley, with all due respect, we are still ourselves gathering information, and so it may very well be that we are not always in a position to answer every question. It's okay for you to put your question on the table. There will be considerably more discussion on this article, as you well know, and it'll be, there'll be a substantial debate at town meeting.
I think Ms. Frarley is looking for something more than, I think she's looking for a prediction, and, you know, nobody can-
No, I'm looking for the discussion they had in the office that said, here's how it might apply there. Nothing's written in stone, but it's a fair question.
And there, there was no discussion of that sort. Regina, the best I can do is suggest that you actually look at Article Six. I'm sorry that you didn't have a chance to do it prior to this meeting, but Article Six has explicit proposed guidelines for Hancock Village. And those guidelines could be passed by town meeting, they could be modified by town meeting, or theoretically, town meeting could reject Article Six. It could reject Article Five and Article Six, but-
I understand that.
What I've certainly tried to do is to, is to put in writing guidelines for the Hancock Village Neighborhood Conservation District in, in, in the terms that were the best that I could do. And they're there, and I think, you know, the first step would be to look at them.
Well, I do hope there'll be a real public hearing when more people will be noticed, number one, and number two, have a chance to-
This is a warrant article town meeting. The public hearing is going to be at town meeting. There will be ample opportunity for people to ask questions and discuss at town meeting.
I understand that's your practice, but as Selectman Daley informed you when you issued that policy of the chair, it wasn't always such here, and I know because I've been here for 12 years every week. So, the neighborhood comes when they know they have a chance to speak.
Thank you.
They won't be getting that chance at town meeting, Selectman.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for this chance to speak on behalf of the neighborhood. First, I wanted to thank Selectman Benka for his leadership on this issue and for drafting this legislation. You know, I recently came before you to summarize a Brookline Neighborhood Alliance meeting, and this was my first meeting. This is all sort of new to me, and it was quite striking at that meeting how much, how much issues there were with overdevelopment and how few tools that were available to properly limit or control development. And I think that this Neighborhood Conservation District legislation would be a very important step to giving neighborhoods the ability to regulate development in a way that development could move forward in a way that was compatible with each neighborhood. Particularly about warrant Article Six, I think it's important to point out what has been proposed and why the overdevelopment of Hancock Village needs to be stopped. So, first of all, Hancock Village, the history has already been outlined by Alyssa. So first of all, Hancock Village, the history has already been outlined by Alyssa. And I'll just point out that the warrant Article 6 would essentially implement many of the original guidelines for its restrictions on development. So I don't think it is any more onerous than it was meant to be when it was originally conceived. Secondly, just point out what the developer has in mind. He has in mind the development six times more dense than the neighborhood. He has in mind a six-story building in an area zone for two and a half stories. They have in mind paving over the green space that separates the multifamily units from, from our homes. He wants to replace it with closely spaced, single-family homes and a driveway. He wants to add 100 more students to the Brookline schools, which are already overcrowded, and this will probably require building a new school. They want to add more debt to Brookline since Hancock Village costs more than it, more than it makes. So we recently met with the developer, since they had to have a public meeting about their major impact project. And essentially, I, I guess I'm putting words in their mouth, but they basically said, we know that these are all problems, but this is our right to do this, and too bad for you guys. I think that this is just the wrong type of attitude. And this is, this is the type of legislation we need to control these developers. Thank you.
And for the record, for our recorder, just identify yourself by name, please.
I'm sorry. I'm Bill Poo. I live at 249 Beverly Road.
Thank you, Mr. Poo. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Brian McKee. I'm C-K-I-E. I reside at 266 Russell Road in Brookline, and I am a supporter to Hancock Village. And just want to point out a couple of things, I don't take up too much of your time. First, I do appreciate any protection that we can get, both as homeowners in the neighborhood and parents of children. The Hancock Village expansion, to me, is just, isn't good for anybody, except for perhaps the owner of Hancock Village. Puts increased capacity, increased load on our schools, traffic, increased cost. And I guess one thing that bothers me a lot is, you know, as Bill Poo said, they did meet with us, they're not honest people. And I don't say that of many people. You know, they put these CAD CAM pictures of how the neighborhood was going to look like. And the thing, it just keeps bothering me, is they showed these, you know, 35, 40-foot trees surrounding their planned expansion. And there's no way they're going to put 35 and 40-foot trees in there. So when I look at, obvious deception, obvious lies on one small thing. I mean, they could've put trees on the CAD CAM, you know, five feet, six feet, which is probably what they're planning anyway. But they're lying to us. They're lying to us. And therefore, any protection that the Selectmen would give our neighborhood, our children, I greatly appreciate. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McKee.
Dissenting voice.
Good evening. Maybe not. But James Shea, I'm a lawyer representing Chestnut Hill Realty, the owner of Hancock Village for over 25 years. Very good, I would submit, citizen of the community. I think I'm getting a little old for this, to say this, but I was surprised, or we were surprised, not that this was filed, but how it happened, that there was absolutely no consultation with Chestnut Hill Realty, when it is the sole subject of this warrant article. Was surprising, but we're just going to have to get over that. Beyond that, I think looking at, and I'm not going to get into the specifics of the warrant article at this time, but the genesis of this, according to the preamble or postambul, is this 2005 study that was done for the Historic Commission, Preservation Commission. That study, this, this warrant article bears no resemblance to what was recommended in that study. That study recommended a bylaw that included, that the commission, that required a 50% buy-in by property owners in the, in the neighborhood district. Someone mentioned Wellesley. That's, that, yes, was done by general bylaw, but it's 80% buy-in, okay? Others have done through zoning, that is Chapter 48, if you're looking for enabling legislation, that's, that's enabling legislation for zoning. So it's either zoning, or it's something else. And if, when it's, or, or modification of the preservation bylaw, or statute by home rule. When it's something else, one thing is common, and we're not getting into the details, but there's either, or both, of major participation of the property owner in the formation of the district, and/or major participation in the commission going forward. We have none of that here. So again, I've, I know the neighbors, and they're very nice people, and enjoy talking to them over the past few years. We understand there's, the voices of this neighborhood, the ones that we hear, don't want anything to happen at Hancock Village. So we get that. But we don't think that's where the discussion should end. We would hope that in this building, we could have conversations with the leadership of the town to, to figure out what is an appropriate development that will fulfill the, the goals, both of the neighborhood, the reasonable goals of the neighborhood, the developer, or the owner, I should say, and the town. And this is an interesting project. This is, they don't come along like this every day, 50 acres, one ownership. A lot of things could be addressed. This is, again, this is a blunt instrument. I mean, it's, I don't think it helps. It's, and clearly, the, you know, they'll, Chestnut Hill will protect its property rights just like anyone else would. But it's been willing to talk, they're not lying, they're, and I think the way this, this latest project, there was never, there was certainly not a great amount of trust in these, in these committee meetings, but they were generally in the neighborhood, and, and I think it's fair to say dominated by neighbors, which I, I respect that. I mean, it's your, your neighborhood, I'm not going to speak for, for that neighborhood. I, and I don't have open space next to my house, but I, I probably wouldn't want it to go away if I did. But that's a, that's a hypothetical. Basically, the question was, there's a voice out there that says, we don't want anything. Fine. So why should we even talk about anything unless we know you could do something? Now, your building commissioner is a very wise man, very capable, and is not in the business of giving advisory opinions on what, what you can do by special permit, or quote, and I don't mean as of right, Brookline, as of right, is by special permit. So one way to do that, and I, is to file a project and get the process going in this building. And the question is, where, you know, where we go from here? And I appreciate, I know that, that I have no right to speak tonight, and, because it's a, it's a, it's a public meeting, not a public hearing. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wish we could've done it a lot earlier. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Okay. Any other comments, members of the board, before we move on to our last item? Okay, no vote on this one. We'll hold it for later. We're still obviously educating ourselves. Finally, we have a request for a Zipcar open-air parking space at the Church of Our Savior. And I understood from Selectman Banker that you had some questions about this?
Yes. And I have asked that, that this be held. And I'd like to explain briefly why I did ask for the hold on this. In connection with work that I was doing last year on some zoning articles, including the work that the Red Cab Committee was doing, we were trying to rationalize the discrepancy in numbers between cars registered in the town and cars reported on the U.S. Census. And in the course of doing that, we discovered that Zipcar, which had a substantial number of cars garaged in the town, had no cars registered as being garaged in the town, and therefore was not paying any excise taxes to the town. This led to some changes which have already been implemented. For example, in November 2009, when we passed zoning amendments to permit Zipcar parking, it was reported that there were 78 Zipcars in the town. In December 2010, the Zipcar website reported that there were 56 cars located in Brookline. And it turns out that Zipcar was reporting to the state that those cars were garaged in Cambridge, and therefore was paying excise taxes on those cars to Cambridge rather than to Brookline. Going back over the last three years, we're talking about tens of thousands of dollars of excise tax revenue, indeed, likely into six figures, that was unpaid to Brookline. It's my understanding-
And we get it back from Cambridge.
Well, it's my understanding that Brookline has asked Cambridge to abate those amounts, and Cambridge has said no. My point is, I don't see why it's Brookline's responsibility to chase Cambridge, when the cause of this was Zipcar reporting the information incorrectly to the Registry of Motor Vehicles. What has happened, since I raised this inquiry at the end of last year, it is my understanding that in 2011, Zipcar is now paying excise taxes to Brookline on the cars that are actually garaged in Brookline. It's also my understanding that under state law, one can abate excise taxes for a period going back three years. And what, what I'm, what I would like verification of, what I would like explored, is the question of why Zipcar cannot correct its registration information for the three prior years and get an abatement from Cambridge and pay the amounts owed to Brookline. I sent an email to our assessor, Gary McCabe. He is out until tomorrow. So that's why I asked that this item be put on hold this week. In the event that, that abatement procedure is something that is possible, I would like to see it followed. If there is some clear reason why the abatement process would not work, I believe we should discuss some payment in lieu of taxes that will make Brookline either entirely, or at least partially, whole for the unpaid taxes over prior years. Because ultimately, we have a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that taxes owed to the town are paid to the town, and it's clear that that has not been the case.
Okay.
And, and let me just say, this arose in the context of an application by the Church of Our Savior for an open-air parking space license for two Zipcars. And I've discussed with the senior warden of the church, the reason for my hold on this article, that it has nothing to do with the church. And, you know, frankly, if it were another hourly rental company, I would not have held this matter. But the place that we have leverage is with respect to the granting of open-air licenses, and also the renewal of open-air licenses, and the renewal of, of licenses for the use of town parking lots.
Okay. So I have a question for you, because I thought the strategy would be to withhold renewal of open-air licenses for all Zipcar slots until such time as this is resolved.
Well, this-
It's going to come up in December.
This, this is the first one that, this, these are new licenses, these, this came up first.
Selectman Marmel, uh, sorry, Daley.
I'm surprised you suggest a payment in lieu of taxes. It seems to me that if they had cars here, they owe us the excise tax, and they were fraudulently reporting them somewhere else, and we should make a demand for the taxes.
I think probably fraud is too strong a word. But it is clear that, that, I mean, they, the Zipcar attributes it to a computer error.
Okay. Well, given that we cannot deal with this tonight, and the fact that you have already approached the assessor, and I see our finance director is sitting still in the back room, back of the room, we'll perhaps put the question of dealing with Zipcar in a, as a separate issue. Would you deny this until that's totally resolved?
I'd, I'd like to see, I'd, I'd like to see some progress, or at least get some idea of where we're going with this.
Okay.
You know, if, I just saw the, the article about Hertz getting into this business in Sunday's Globe, if this were Hertz.
Right. Okay. I, I, it seems to me we've got a very big issue here that needs to be addressed.
We do.
Selectman Marmel.
Selectman Banker, you may or may not know the answer to this, but just out of curiosity and the interest of sort of assessing the intent to, to not pay, do you know what the excise tax rate is in Cambridge?
I, I don't know what the rate is in Cambridge versus here.
I think it's, it's all the same. It's on the car, it's on the vehicle. So the vehicle is the same, no matter where it's housed.
So then if they, if they were paying, it, it, it does make me at least somewhat sympathetic that it was some sort of unintentional error.
Right.
If they were flat out not paying anybody, that would be much more troubling to me.
Right.
I do completely agree with your point that Brookline has clearly owed that money, but I do feel somewhat better about their, you know, intent at the end of the day, in terms of trying to, to skip out on the bill, as it were.
No, no, I, and-
They actually paid, because they paid to the wrong place.
Right. And that's, and that's, and that's why, why I said I would not use the word fraud here.
Right, right.
They were not registered in Florida.
Okay. Selectman Goldstein.
The way that some cars are.
I don't mind holding this for a week, but on the other hand, I don't think it's fair to punish the Church of Our Savior for, for this right now. I'm sure they're anxious to get their lease started with Zipcar and start getting income streams.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry that it is the Church of Our Savior was the first one up since this issue came to the-
Well, may, may I suggest, we, we could actually consider going ahead, not necessarily tonight, because we've, we've postponed the public hearing. But we might treat all of the open-air Zipcar licenses as a group at renewal time, which certainly would not single out a single, a particular-
We could grant this one for a couple of months.
Yeah, right. I mean, we could grant it, that would, it would only be effective until renewal time in any case.
Right, right.
So we're talking about-
I'd be curious to hold it for a week.
Yeah.
And if it looks like things are moving in the right direction after a week, it might be worth granting it and holding over Zipcar's head, the, the group renewal at the end of the year.
The group renewal.
Yeah.
But I don't think anyone's interested in punishing it.
I couldn't agree more.
Mr. Sorrelli, do you have anything you would like to add to this murky situation?
Just briefly, we've made contact with Zipcar, and they're willing to sit down and discuss this matter with us and resolve the matter.
It, it's the city of Cambridge, though, who I think is our, I mean, they've collected the excise, right?
They've billed and collected 44 bills in fiscal year 10. We collected six bills in fiscal year 10. We've collected all of the bills in fiscal 11.
So for fiscal 11, it's actually coming to Brookline?
Oh, yes.
Yes. We have that, that, we, we have corrected it going forward.
The, what I'm trying to get at is, the, the fact that Cambridge has that money is a problem for Zipcar. Our, we don't, we shouldn't have to negotiate with Cambridge. We only have to negotiate with-
No, Zipcar should negotiate with them.
Zipcar that owes us some back taxes. And whether they get it back from Cambridge or not is their legal problem.
Owners of vehicles are, or communities, or owners of vehicles, let me just put it that way, are responsible for paying one excise per car per year. So the excise bill did go out. Zipcar, I agree, Zipcar should be pursuing this with Cambridge. But the Board of Assessors of any community is an autonomous board, and they could choose not to abate. If they choose not to abate, I may very actually interested in this payment in lieu of excise tax. I think there may be a solution to it, frankly. And I think that's a solution.
You're just like any pilot.
I think that's a solution. Yeah. I think it's a solution that Zipcar may be interested in.
Okay. All right. So there's clearly more to come. Sorry.
Can I ask you, do you see, do you see holding this for a week as a, a weapon in your arsenal, or something beneficial?
No, no, no. I think holding it briefly would be a good thing, because it, it will allow us, first of all, to get all the players back in the room. Our chief assessor is out, he'll be back tomorrow. I agree everywhere, everything with Selectman Banker said, we, Kara is involved in this, Barton is involved in this. We've already made contact with Zipcar, we'd very likely be able to set up a conference call or a meeting in the next few days. We may be able to resolve it. I'm not quite sure it's going to be resolved via excise tax abatement- abatement and rebilling, but I think it can be resolved in the other way.
Okay. Well, in that case, I, I, I think it's appropriate. We'll hold it for a week, and we'll ask you to update us. Thank you very much, Mr. Sorillo. And I believe that ends our meeting for September 20.